Okay, folks, it's after seven o'clock. If everybody could find their way to the table here, we'll get started. Yep. Is this not working?
There, you'll have to speak closer.
Usually it picks up pretty well.
Now it is, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna start tonight's meeting with our pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Trying something a little different tonight. Councilmembers Wu.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, regarding approval of the minutes for October 23rd, 2017, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Sir?
I just want to make everybody aware that I included the wrong set in the original packet, sent a revised set around today. Hopefully, I got all the corrections in there. But if there are more, please let me know, because I've got it right here in front of me.
So do we have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Dennis and second by Jared. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Do we have any additions to the agenda? Yes?
I would like to discuss the impact of the proposed federal tax code on graduate students' education. I don't know if it's appropriate to add that here.
Mr. Clerk, could you advise on that?
It's up to you. A discussion item can be added. Since there's no action, you're perfectly legal, within the Open Meetings Act legally able to do that.
Do we need a vote on that, or?
Yes, you do need a supermajority to add things to the agenda.
Do we need a motion or just a vote? Okay.
So you made a motion, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Mr. Ammons?
So I certainly support a discussion on that. Looks like we have a presentation and a discussion item already on here. So I just want us to be mindful of that. If you want to make sure that we're gonna have a thorough discussion for the topic that you are asking for us to discuss, you should consider that, I think.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I assume that'll be item 12 at the end?
Twelve, it'll be item 13, and to German, we'll get a 14.
Okay, it'll be at the end.
Any other comments or a motion?
I made a motion to add that to a discussion item, and I think Dennis seconded.
Dennis seconded, so we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have added Mary Alice's issue to the agenda to be item number 13. Don't think I've ever done that before. Okay, public input. Is there a Lynn here that wants to speak on the liquor ordinance? I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
She wants to speak at the time that you had. Did you say public input?
I'm sorry, what?
Did you say public input?
Yes, we're on public input. Are you Lynn? Would you tell us your last name, please?
I'm Lynn Stukey. I'm actually from Champaign, but when I saw the newspaper this morning, I decided to come here tonight. I was a little gobsmacked by that story. This is an issue that periodically pops up in Champaign-Urbana, where somebody comes into town and proposes that we do delivery of liquor and cigarettes. I was very surprised at the response I got when I called the mayor's office, and that's why I came here tonight. I am in opposition to this. When I was pregnant with my son almost 24 years ago, I was the co-manager of a bar on campus. This is a fantastic way for young people who should not have access to alcohol or cigarettes to get it. Because what's gonna happen is somebody's gonna place an order online, somebody else will be standing there with an ID, whether that ID belongs to them will be highly debatable. And I know that the company says they're gonna scan the ID and confirm that it's valid. Well, there's a lot of valid IDs out there, but they're stolen. Or somebody was moving, they knew they were gonna get an ID in a different state, so they left a present to their roommates who are still here and underage. This is not a good idea. We should not have companies delivering alcohol and cigarettes to the residents of our cities. I have nothing against older people who are of age consuming alcohol or cigarettes. I mean, I'm not in favor of cigarettes, my father died of lung cancer. But if you're gonna get it, find a way to get to the store and get it, or have someone who's of age go to the store and get it for you. Don't send it to people's houses, that's gonna be a problem.
I have one question, and there might be others. I understand your concern. How is it that delivering it provides more of an opportunity for someone to misrepresent themselves as in compared to going in in person into a store?
Because you're online, and you know, as the famous cartoon says on the internet, nobody knows you're a dog. When the delivery person gets there, and I've worked in restaurants that have done deliveries, I know what happens. They're standing, the customer's standing there with a $20 bill, give me the order, and the delivery person doesn't check to make sure that that credit card or that ID are supposed to be with that person. They take the money and they leave. There's not gonna be the checks that you're gonna get in a controlled environment, which is what you get when you're at a bar or a liquor store or a supermarket, or any other type of establishment where you can currently purchase liquor.
So you think it's under a tighter control in the store environment?
Oh, yes, sir, I do.
I've never ordered, so.
I understand, but I can speak to my own experience of having turned away people whom I knew were underaged and were presenting me with IDs that I knew were not theirs, trying to purchase liquor. One of them, in fact, was a young man from my church. It was kind of funny, but it's not a good idea. It's bad enough in the bars, if you open it up to the houses, it's gonna get even worse. And if you think it's a good idea, just remember that almost 75% of all rapes have alcohol as a factor.
Okay, thank you, there might be some other questions. Bill?
Yeah, and thanks for your call earlier, I just, I got that message just before I came. We passed an ordinance a month or two ago that allowed that aspect of the liquor license. So today, we would be considering whether these particular applicants are qualified to have that. And one of the things they told us, they did come to when we were talking about the ordinance, one of the things they said was that they do scan the ID, and there's a restocking fee, so that's a little disincentive. So if they scan the ID and the person's not of age, they already have the credit card, they automatically charge the credit card. So the company themselves don't lose money by not delivering the liquor, they get the restocking fee. So that's a little bit of a disincentive. And then the police chief also talked a little bit at that meeting to our concerns. I think one of the things was that they could still do the same sort of ID checks, they could set up, you know, they could basically make a purchase and make sure that the person that comes to deliver it checks for the ID. So they could still do that. So I don't know, yeah, I do think it would be a little bit easier to have like a straw purchase buyer, but probably it would just be a little bit more, take a different approach to the enforcement.
Any other questions? Or comments? I guess not. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, our public input continues here with Nathan Polowski, I believe, regarding youth climate report cards.
My name's Nathan Polowski. I'm here with a group that wants to speak on different aspects of the report card, but we promise to keep our comments pretty brief. So I've lived in Urbana and Champaign my entire life. I went to school through Urbana Public Schools, and I am now a sophomore at the University of Illinois. I joined this group and got involved in this fight because climate change is really gonna impact my future and potentially my children's future, and we're gonna be the generation that experiences the most effects. I Matter is a national youth-led organization focused on building a movement for climate action in cities across the country. Locally, we are a group of students from Urbana High School, University Laboratory High School, Central High School, and the University of Illinois. We won't make you listen to all of us talk, but we want you to know our message belongs to a large body of young people in Champaign-Urbana. This is a message that community members and organizations support. We would like you to present you with this petition that drafted the lists, the same goals that we will be asking you for tonight. These goals were endorsed by the Illinois Student Senate and 14 community organizations. We also have a number of petitions from students at both Urbana and Uni High School, which we will deliver to the clerk. We are here tonight because of young people, climate change affects us personally. We will have to deal with the effects of the actions that we take today for the entirety of our lives. To this, this is not a controversial issue, it's a deeply moral one. It is about our inalienable right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We believe that our future matters, and we cannot wait in silence as our elected leaders at the national level deny the massive threat that climate changes to our health, economy, national security, safety, and general well-being. To continue to take minimal steps towards mitigating this disaster puts me and everyone in my generation at risk of suffering from more severe storms, longer and hotter heat waves, worsening flood and drought cycles, growing invasive species and wildfires, food and water shortages, and a dramatic increase in refugees from climate-impacted lands. The time for action on climate change is now, and if our federal and state government will not respond appropriately, we must come together as a community to do it ourselves. Scientists have given us a prescription for solving this crisis. In 2008, leading climate scientist and former director of NASA, James Hansen, published a paper describing the actions necessary to prevent the worst effects of climate change. He showed that we are capable of doing something about this and provided a path forward. Now, as the devastating effects of climate change are becoming increasingly clear, we must choose whether or not we will take that path. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, there might be some questions or comments. Anybody? Mr. Miller?
Hey Nathan, good to see you.
Good to see you.
And I Matter folks, thanks you guys for coming in and bringing this to our, I think you guys have a couple of the people who are gonna talk, right?
Yes, we do.
So maybe I'll address after you guys are all through, but I just want to say personal things.
All right.
For you guys coming in.
Thank you. Okay. Continuing on with public input, forgive me, I'm doing the best I can with the names. Lily Vanahashem. Did I get that even close? If not, straighten me out. Come on up, Lily. You are here on the same topic, I believe.
Hi, my name is Lily Vanahashem. I am a junior at Uni High. And like Nathan said, I am involved with I Matter because my generation is the future, and we're the ones who will experience global climate change at the largest scale. So it's very important to me for that reason. Over the past few months, we have been working to collect data from the city to evaluate how we are doing in taking action to stop climate change. Tonight, we would like to present to all of you a youth climate report card. The report card was created by I Matter with advisors from E-I-C-L-E-I, which is Local Governments for Sustainability, and also the Rocky Mountain Institute. So there are four sections of the report card, and they ask these questions. One, does our city ha, sorry, does our city have a climate action plan to sufficiently reduce emissions in time? Two, what percent of our energy is renewable? Three, are we reducing the amount of waste we generate and increasing the amount that is composted or recycled? And four, are we doing anything to remove the main cause of climate change, which is excess carbon dioxide from the atmosphere, with more things like trees and green spaces? And then also, every city gets a bonus half a grade for having a youth involved in setting climate-related policies. So the report card grades are based on real data that we gathered from Urbana with the help of Scott Tess. We evaluated our city based on concrete actions that we have taken as a community and goals we have set to combat this urgent problem. Urbana overall earned an average, or no, it earned a score of C+. And the primary reason for this is Urbana's climate action plan, which is the most heavily-weighted section of the report card. So Urbana's current climate action plan has the goal of reducing emissions by 80% by 2050. And in order to get an A on the report card, cities must be committed to having net zero emissions by 2040. And we acknowledge that many consider this a high bar to set. So most of us are, in I Matter, are high school and college students, so we're all familiar with not always getting perfect grades. But when this happens, we don't give up, instead, we work harder in order to succeed. We believe in the city, and we know that we can do it. We know that this goal is much more closely aligned to what cities across the country must do, and we refuse to plan for failure. All that being said, we really do appreciate the work that Urbana has done to become more sustainable, and the steps in the right direction that the community has and continues to take. Like, for example, Urbana's community solar program and the municipal electricity aggregation. Our hope is just that this report card will help to gain an understanding of where we stand as a city, and that it offers a starting point for further progress. We invite you to get back to us within 60 days and let us know how you plan to improve your grades. Thank you very much.
Ms. Vanahashem, Lily? I think, yeah, I think there's one comment for you, ma'am.
I love this inversion. I've been giving grades for so many decades. It's so refreshing. But how do we, okay, we can, you know, get back to you in 60 days, but one of the things might be that we could even kind of have some discussions between now and then on exactly what is feasible and how much it would cost. Because, I mean, I could, you know, we can imagine all the right things. We can, we can convert all of our fleet to electric cars. We could provide, we could in some way subsidize electric charging stations all around town. We could, we could do geothermal heating and cooling, or somehow give subsidies for that, as well as doing it in our own buildings. There are a lot of ways that we could, I mean, it's not just imagination, there are a lot of ways that this could be done. And, but somebody will pay for it in order to do it. So I think it would be a great exercise for us together to think about this realistically, not just as goals, but as mechanisms. And, you know, what are the possibilities, what are the costs? And anyway, I think this is great. I'm really happy that you are, you know, pushing us in this conversation. I agree with everything that you said. So, but, except that, don't go away for 60 days and expect us to have figured it all out. I think, I think we need you to work with us. Oh, yeah, sure.
Oh, just that, yeah, I completely agree with you, and I think logistically is another question, but we're all open and happy, and we want to work with you and talk with you, so absolutely. Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah. I don't attend the Environmental and Sustainability Commission meetings all the time, but I did go one time to talk about a bike path as a transportation option rather than cars. And there were, there were two representatives from Urbana High School present who talked to us about recycling efforts that they wanted to start at the high school. So there is a, there has been interaction through city commissions with youth. So it's a little bit unfair that youth involvement is rated as none, but you probably didn't know that. And so I just want to let you know that there has been some interaction. And I think that Representative, Councilmember Erickson Jacobson, Eric Jacobson, has a good idea, and it would be nice to have conversations with you in the future.
Mr. Jacobson?
I have to say that neither as a student nor as a professor, did I really take grades very seriously except as a starting point for useful conversations.
Ms. Wu?
I basically had a question for city staff, and I know that Scott is in, where's the conference?
He's in Bonn at an international conference on environmental sustainability.
So I'm assuming that when he gets back, he'll give us an update, and I think it would be great, there's a great turnout here, if you guys would come and listen to the feedback that he got. But in addition, I'm wondering if perhaps we could have an update or some kind of list of what we're doing to achieve this 2050 goal, or if there's something that already exists, maybe.
Are you asking for an update on the climate action plan?
Yes, where we stand with it.
Yeah, we could do that. We could also ask the Sustainability Advisory Commission to address some of the issues in here. I think that's the place to start, actually, for them to evaluate, and they could actually consider some of the impacts.
Great, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, rolling right along with public input here, we have Michael Carpenter on the same issue. I'm sorry, Michelle Carpenter. Oh, okay. You didn't look like Michael.
Yeah, I know. I'm not sure his being, but anyway, yes, it's Michael. It always throws people, so not the first one to be thrown by that. All right, can I start? Okay. So I'm gonna mix things up here a little bit. I am involved with I Matter, but I'm also involved with the local Sierra Club Prairie Group. I interned with Sierra Club over the summer, and I'm currently working with them on a volunteer basis. They're a great group of people, and we're, you know, heavily involved in environmental sustainability at the local level. I do want to kind of introduce a couple of things that I think really intersect with and very strongly relate with what I Matter is doing and what they're talking about tonight. So one thing is that Sierra Club has a national-level campaign called Ready for 100. It's all about local action to commit to and achieve reliance on 100% clean energy by a set date. And, you know, that sounds kind of unrealistic, I mean, to a lot of people, I think it does, including myself when I first heard it. But it's received a very positive amount of feedback from cities all over the US. There's currently over 160 mayors across various states that have signed on to this, and currently, over seven cities have already transitioned to reliance on 100% clean energy. So it's doable, and I was really happy that there are actual case studies of cities that have managed to do this. One of those cities that I always tell people, and that shocks people oftentimes, is Georgetown, Texas. And every time I tell people this, they're just, they can't believe that a city in Texas is one of the first 10 cities to rely on 100% renewable energy. One of the things I love about this case study is that they have a very high population. There are 50,000 people living in Georgetown. Many of the other cities that have transitioned are around 10,000, 8,000 people, so it's a little bit harder to compare, but this time, we have a larger population to look at. And also, because it's a very conservative city, the route that they took to actually make the switch was more of a fiscal one, because oftentimes, I think, we hear kind of the tree-hugger argument, like, you know, let's save the planet, yada, yada, which is great, and we need that too, but also, it's poss, this is fiscally the right move. And it was really something that I was happy to hear that people can think that way now, because it's becoming so much more viable as time goes on. So they're currently at 100% clean energy, thanks to their switch to wind and solar. Texas produces tons and tons of wind energy as well as solar. And there's another case study, Aspen, Colorado. One of the things I love about this one, it's a smaller city, only 8,000 people, but they rely on a very varied mix of energy intake. They have hydroelectric, wind, landfill gas, as well as solar to heat their water. So I really, I think that that's a great example to highlight how there's so many options for how we can get this energy and actually make it a reality. And there are also many larger cities that have committed, that their mayors have signed on to this, and they're committed to doing this in the future. A recent example is Orlando, Florida, which, over the summer, their mayor signed on to this pledge, and they're currently working on their climate action plan as to how they're actually going to achieve it. And I think kind of the takeaway from all of this is that local really matters. Right now, we're at a situation where we can't really rely on the federal government to make these choices for us, and that's why you see this powerful movement across states and locals and cities, because these are the people who have the ability to make the change. My culmination project for my internship was actually a town hall. And we threw, we put this town hall together thanks to the Future Energy Jobs Act, and really wanted to highlight this piece of state legislature that was passed, I think, earlier in the year, so it's very recent, and really point out to people the various opportunities that it brings to the state of Illinois in terms of renewable energy. It was a huge success. We had a great panel of speakers, Scott Tess was also there, and we had over 70 people attend. There's a lot of support for this locally. And I was also collecting petitions over the summer, I talked to over 100 people easily. Everybody loved the idea. You know, of course, I've heard people say, you know, it's just an idea, and we need to really work on the logistics of that, but I think now that we, we're starting to see these case studies emerge, we're starting to see this come together, we can look to other cities as examples and really see what they're doing. So yeah, I think we need to kind of keep that momentum and look at the Future Energy Jobs Act and really build on that, as well as look at these case studies and see what we can do as a community. And I think there's a lot of support for it, so moving forward, it won't be too hard, I think.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Jacobson?
So obviously, in the near future, we won't count on the federal government to lead the way on this, but I guess I just want to note that the tax plan that has been reported out of the House Subcommittee and will be voted on the floor next week does eliminate tax breaks for wind power. So one might want to speak up about that, because they may not help us, but maybe they shouldn't go out of their way to make it harder.
Yes, I am in complete agreement with that statement.
Any other questions or comments? I guess not, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, still on public input, on the same subject, we have Rebecca Laurent. Glad you guys aren't holding me to these names, you're being nice to me.
Hello, everyone, my name is Rebecca Lawrence. I'm a junior at the University of Illinois studying environmental science, which is something I never thought I would say. In high school, I would always assure people that I would absolutely not study anything related to the environment. Yet, when it was time to fill out my college applications, I found myself selecting it as my major. Climate change is something I desperately wanted to run away from, but knew that I never could. Like most kids, learning about climate change in school at a young age was absolutely terrifying. But it was the realization that nothing was being done about it that absolutely crushed me. And after years of burnout, I can't describe the feeling that I and many of my peers share. And after years of burnout, I can't describe the feeling that I and many of my peers shared when seeing people elected and appointed to lead this country that do not even recognize this as an issue. We were proud to see Mayor Marlin sign on to a commitment to uphold the Paris Climate Agreement in Urbana. However, the Climate Action Plan that Urbana currently has does not meet the goals of the agreement and that's why we're here before you tonight. We know what we must do and we know that we can do it. After researching climate change, Urbana's progress and actions that other cities have taken, we've drafted a resolution that we would like to recommend to you tonight. One that starts from what is scientifically necessary and not what others consider to be politically possible. In addition to achieving 100% renewable electricity by 2025, like Michael talked about, we are asking that Urbana adopt the goal of achieving carbon neutrality by 2040 and actively work toward achieving that goal now. And finally, we do ask that young people be included in the process of doing so. We are the transitional generation, the last to be born into a society focused on short-term greed and the first to enter the sustainable world that we know is possible. The first to experience the major effects of climate change and the last with the ability to do anything about it. Our future matters and we cannot be silent as Harveys and Irma's pound our coasts, as wildfires ravage the West and people around the world struggle to survive increasingly deadly droughts, temperatures, diseases, and storms. This is not the world that we want to grow up in. Together, we can set our city on the path to ending the climate crisis. We have a vision for Urbana as a community that will lead a transition to a sustainable future by prioritizing the well-being of the youngest generation. We know that climate change is a very complex issue and we truly do appreciate that Urbana has shown leadership on this issue already, taking many important steps in the right direction. And we are here because we want to work with you to do more. We commit to working with you to adjust and implement Urbana's Climate Action Plan to earn an A and to contribute to creating a just and livable future for all people. Because the time for action is now and nothing is more worth our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments for her? I guess not. Thank you very much. Okay, still on the same topic, we've got a Lois Kane.
Hi, I'm resident of Urbana, Lois Kane. Thanks for letting me speak to you all tonight about this and there's a lot of us here. I'm actually a local member with Food and Water Watch. We're a national nonprofit organization that fights to protect food and water issues and from, anywhere from CAFOs all the way up to climate change. And like iMatter and Sierra Club, we are working at local levels with elected officials and city governments through the state and up through the federal government. And I gave everybody just a few pages for some information. And I'm here to talk about the Off Fossil Fuels for a Better Future Act. Tulsi Gabbard introduced this in September and there are now 16 cosponsors, two of which are Illinois Representatives, Jan Schakowsky and Louis Gutierrez. So, the first page here is a summary of the bill. And then, on the back of it are the cosponsors from around the country, different states. And then, there's a list of Illinois officials who have signed on besides our two representatives, from state senators to representatives to down the local, more local levels. And then, the next page is a Food and Water Watch fact sheet about stopping climate chaos and the bill itself. And then, what I'm here tonight to ask you all is, the next page is an Off Fossil Fuels elected official pledge. And what we're doing is we're asking local elected officials from anything, from school boards all the way up to our local, our district's senators and representatives. It's basically a pledge that just says, I accept the science that says humankind's use of fossil fuels is the primary driver of dangerous global climate change and that you will work to help get us off fossil fuels as soon as possible. And basically, you can just sign it and at the moment, we're just collecting pledges like this to show further up the food chain that there really is support at our local levels and, you know, and all kinds of local elected officials are behind it. Then, the last page is the second ask, which is for city councils like you all. And it's a pledge that the city itself is behind getting off fossil fuels. The bill itself says off completely by 2035. And the resolution here is basically about the science consensus about the climate is warming and that City of Urbana would support this. And then, this would actually go to the state legislature to get Illinois to realize that cities around Illinois are totally behind getting off fossil fuels and hopefully, you know, getting the Off Fossil Fuels Act passed. So, the resolution is just what Food and Water Watch has written, but it's completely editable input from all of you to change whatever part of it that makes it more Urbana-friendly. But basically, that's, that's what Food and Water Watch is working on to get local elected officials to pledge and then to get the City of Urbana to pledge, to support this.
Okay, any questions or comments? Mr. Jacobson.
Can you provide these documents in electronic form so that we can incorporate them into our system?
Sure. I can. I wasn't too sure exactly how to do it, but I just thought I'd do a real quick handout here for you all to at least get an idea what we were talking about. And the whole idea of working together, like you were talking about with iMatter and the students, is definitely what this is all about, too, is to bring everybody together to start at a grassroots level to move up the food chain here.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Ammons?
So, thank you for coming. Thank all of you for coming. iMatter, Sierra Club, Off Fossil Fuels. It's inspiring to me to see the organization and the effort of you all working together and also to see so many young people involved. We do have young people involved in the Human Relations Commission. We just had a young lady get appointed to the Human Relations Commission. So, certainly, there is space for more young people on other boards or commissions and to create relationships with the public or with young people in relationship to environmental issues and concerns as well. So, just keep pushing for that. I'm sure we can make something like that happen. I also wanted to, I'm sure most of you know, but I want to take the opportunity to say to the public that there's an informational meeting by People's Gas to announce it contaminated the Mohammed Aquifer with natural gas leaked in December 2016 from its facility located in Champaign County. So, on Tuesday, November 14th, there'll be two sessions, one at 2:00 PM and one at 6:00 PM. And it's going to be at the Lake of the Woods Forest Preserve, 109 South Lake of the Woods Road in Mohammed. So, we want to make sure that the public is aware of that, make sure folks get out there and ask questions to make sure that those questions get answered to continue to protect our water supply. And I do not see, I think Councilmember Jacobson and I discussed this, oh, several months ago, as he focused more on climate issues and environmental issues, that there is nothing more pressing for us than to protect our air, our water, and our soil to make sure that we can have quality of life now and for in the future. So, I just wanted to say to all of you, it's just welling up in me. I'm happy to see the organizing, the efforts, the resolutions, the pledges that, you know, that put elected officials on the spot. Do you support this or do you not? I do. So, I thank you all for coming. I appreciate it.
Mr. Brown, did you have something?
Yeah, just a kind of clarification. It says 100% renewable and zero emission. I wonder how nuclear fits into that?
Actually, I read through the bill. It's not very long. It's only like 49 pages or so. It seems like nuclear's been left off because it's not a fossil fuel, but it's not in the bill anywhere. And I haven't had a chance to, I've asked Jessica Fooyan, who's our regional director. I've asked her and I haven't gotten back, she hasn't gotten back to me yet. So, I don't, I don't know how to answer that question.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Jacobson.
I, I think the situation is, you know, I've had conversations about nuclear with staff people from Union of Concerned Scientists, for example. And I think that people who agree on almost everything else may disagree on whether nuclear should be in the sustainable mix. So, I think that as we get into the nuts and bolts of this, that's probably one area where, instead of just, you know, having sort of a love fest, we may have to have some hard discussions within, you know, a movement for, for saving the climate, saving the earth.
Right, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and the last person I have listed here on this subject is Carol Hayes.
Good evening. My name is Carol Hayes. I'm Executive Director of Prairie Rivers Network. We're a statewide organization based in Champaign that serves as the voice for Illinois's water, rivers, and wildlife. We're the Illinois affiliate of the National Wildlife Federation. Prairie Rivers Network applauds iMatter's approach to engage youth in efforts to lead local climate change efforts. The current climate change we're experiencing has been definitively linked to the amount of greenhouse gases that people have emitted into the atmosphere from the use of fossil fuels, as well as industrial agriculture and land use practices. The extent of climate change that we'll see in the future really depends on the actions we all take now to reduce our use of fossil fuels and other activities that produce greenhouse gases. If we do not reduce the amount of greenhouse gases, we will see a greater degree of climate change. While if we start to significantly reduce greenhouse gas emissions, the extent of climate impact will be lessened. There are many actions that communities can take to mitigate or reduce the ultimate magnitude of climate change. Many of these steps are win-win solutions that will also contribute to cost savings, green jobs, and local economic development. Setting a high bar for climate adaptation plans will ensure that Urbana is better prepared to withstand stress and to adapt successfully in the face of threats or disaster. Eighty-five percent of freshwater withdrawals in Illinois come from the energy sector. Despite our abundant current water resources, Illinois will face water shortages ahead. We have an unprecedented opportunity in Illinois to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels by implementing renewable energy strategies that benefit all community members and reduce our reliance on fossil fuels and ethanol. Food waste is one of the greatest contributors to greenhouse gases, including the potent greenhouse gas methane, which is emitted from landfills. Energy that goes into wasted food production and food waste that goes into landfills is the third greatest contributor to global greenhouse gases after the US and China. Reducing food waste through food recovery and organic composting is a critical strategy for meeting the Paris Climate Agreement goals. We encourage the City of Urbana to work with youth as you position Urbana to be a climate leader in Illinois. We want to work with you because, they want to work with you, we want to work with you, because their future depends on it. After working with many of these youth, I believe that they will indeed be our next greatest generation and I encourage you to work with them.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments for her? Seeing none, I guess not. Thank you very much for your time. Oh, Mr. Ammons.
The proposals, it wasn't, I guess, necessarily for you, Carol, but just for the group and for everyone involved. The, there were some ideas that were shared, but being able to come back and, and work with along the lines of what Eric talked about, about how to implement some of those different things. So, I look forward to an opportunity for us to actually sit down and say, okay, here's a situ, here's something that we're doing in the city that could be done differently. Here's how we can maybe create the support, the funding mechanism necessary to make the transition and the change. I know that there was quite a few discussions about solar panels, possibly on rooftops. But do you have, do we have the capacity from a standpoint of tax dollars and resources to just go change every roof or do we wait until each, that particular roof needs to be replaced and then implement something like that? So, there's been plenty of talk about different things here, but the implementation of it, it'd be interesting to talk to, to you all about how to, to do some, or how you think we could possibly do some of that.
And I think we're happy to help with cost-benefit analyses of different types of strategies and we're able to leverage experts that could help the city think about that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for her before she gets up again? Mr. Jacobson.
Yeah, I'm intrigued by the food waste thing and I, I, I don't pretend to many virtues, but I always clean my plate. And, but how do we, how do we incur it? How do we, how do we get a handle on that? How do we encourage people not to throw so much food out? Is there, are there?
Actually, the, so the US EPA has set a goal by 2050 to reduce food waste by 50%. And doing so, not just by how we scrape our plate, you know, the individual actions that we take, but how we can think about food systems and beginning to work further upstream to change those. So, not waiting until it becomes waste that would enter a landfill, but really thinking more strategically about how to address this issue. So, there is a food scrap coalition that has been started. It began in the city of Chicago. We're expanding it downstate and we're looking at strategies for how to do exactly that. And there can be many ways to address it, including technology. I think it's a very fertile and exciting field. I think it brings many opportunities, but there'll be challenges, too. But this is an area that I would like for you to think about as you're thinking about the climate plan as well. So, don't ignore this side. There's already, you know, an interest in composting in this community and, that's very active. So, you can build off of that and build off of people's interest and will. What I think people don't appreciate is the statistic. They don't realize how much it's contributing to greenhouse gases and this is a way that, you know, we can, we can look at it from another perspective and take other actions, too.
Mayor Marlin.
City staff has been looking into food scrap recycling. We're just not ready to.
That's great.
But, but yeah.
Very excited to hear that.
They've been looking into it.
Mr. Roberts, thank you.
I hope. Are you really talking, Carol, about industrial food scrap waste? I.e., the people who are manufacturing food items or restaurants or grocery stores that are probably producing larger quantities of food that isn't used or recycled or thrown away? Bread that's three days old, you know, waste from de-leafing lettuce at the store, throwing away expired fruits?
So, there, there is a whole set of recommendations that I would encourage you to look at. It certainly does include expiration dates and whether or not those dates are accurate or, but it also looks at food that never even reaches the grocery store, never even reaches a restaurant because it is perceived to be non-conforming. It doesn't fit in terms of how it shipped. It doesn't look like everything else in the store. So, we waste a lot of food before it ever reaches there. One of the strategies is food recovery and how we might glean food before, that, that isn't accepted, wouldn't be accepted in a restaurant or a grocery store for people who are food insecure. So, that's, that's one, that's just one strategy. There are many. I'd like to share those with you, if you don't mind. I'd be happy to give them to you all for you to look at. I know you're already considering this, but, you know, looking at the whole variety of strategies would be probably a good idea.
Great. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I know we've discussed it a little bit in council before about the food waste recycling or composting or pickup. And one of the strategies Scott was looking into was to start out with kind of a commercial pickup, so with the big, the big places, the grocery stores and restaurants could have a pickup option. But one question came up was, the landfill that we use, I think in Danville, prob, we thought it had a methane recovery capability, so that anything that produced methane, I don't know how efficient it is, it's probably better to intercept it anyway before it gets in there. So, that would, you know, that would definitely play into it, though, if, if you're already recovering methane from the, from what's being produced in the landfill and sending a truck around and picking up, you know, small amounts of compost every five houses probably isn't going to be energy efficient. But I know a lot of people in my neighborhood compost. I know the U of I has a, kind of a big composting operation that we could learn from and our landscape recycling, of course, has, has a big composting operation that we could build on. So, I think all that's worth looking. on. So I think all that's worth looking into. So if you, if you guys can sit down with Scott or the Sustainability Advisory Committee and figure out what the best plan for us specifically would be, that would be a big help.
Great, be happy to.
Any other questions for Carol? I guess not this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that concludes our climate information. All right, okay. Certainly very impressive, especially the young people with I-Matter. I can tell that everybody really appreciated that. So thank you very much. Next up, we have a presentation from Pulse Point. Dr. Kurt Blumstrand. Okay, I do apologize for that. There were three public input cards here that were not marked as to whether they wanted to speak or not, so we'll just go ahead and do your presentation, if that's okay, and then we'll come back to public input. I'm sorry, the cards weren't marked, so I forgot to ask. So we'll come back to those as soon as we possibly can. Go ahead, Doctor.
Now, excuse me, just a point of order. That is, if we have public participation, it should go in the order of public participation. If they are marked, we should, sir, you should, in my opinion, Mr. Chair, you should allow the people who are here for public participation that's on the agenda in that order. They should be allowed to come and speak in that order.
I certainly, I certainly don't mind.
If you don't mind, that's fine with me. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ammons. Okay, Ms. Joyce Roundtree, did you wish to speak?
No.
No? Okay. We have a card here that says you are in support of the petition against the sewer lateral reimbursement program.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Eldress Melinda Carr and Pastor King James Underwood in opposition, do you wish to speak? Okay, come on up, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Eldress Melinda Carr. I live at thirteen oh eight West Tremont Street, Urbana, and good evening to our Chair, Mr. Hazen, to the Council of the Whole, Committee of the Whole, Mayor Marlin, and wanted to, first of all, we're coming to request a moment of silence for Renee, Renfro, Sister Renee Renfro, who has been part of our committee, Dr. Ellis Committee, and she passed away on November eighth. So I'm just going to pause for a minute and recognize her and her husband, William Renfro. I'm here to represent the Dr. Ellis Committee and the Dr. Ellis Residence with a petition, and we have a total of ninety-six signatures of homeowners and residents who have signed a petition, and I will read the petition. The petition resets follows a petition for the city of Urbana to assume total financial responsibility for sewer problems on city property. We, the undersigned homeowners slash residents of Dr. Ellis Subdivision, strongly urge the Committee of the Whole, Urbana City Council, and Mayor Diane Marlin to reconsider the current ordinance and proposed update to the sanitary sewer pavement reimbursement program. We are asking the city to pay for repairs upfront with sewer funds set aside for this purpose, and not to put the financial burden on residents for repairs beyond their property line, within the city's right-of-way, and on others, and on other residents' private property. And as I was going back over some of the videos from two thousand thirteen, I was looking at the video from Sister Renee Renfro, and she had some profound things to say. A couple of things I just wanted to highlight here, where she had made a call to the attorney for the city of Champaign, and she said that she had talked to the attorney about the situation that we were in, and she said that the attorney expressed, he didn't express any limit on the amount of money that the city would pay if the lateral was in the right-of-way, on the right-of-way. She also said that it was explained to her that the city of Champaign would take care of it. She went on to say that it led her to another point, that there seemed to be a contradiction in terminology, and that is that the lateral is our responsibility, but it's in the city's right-of-way, which is your responsibility, the city. I just want to make a note of those comments that she made back in two thousand thirteen, which are critical for today, and some of the things that we're going through with the sewer issue. Also, as I look back in the, on the videos, I remember a comment by Mr. Jacobson saying that there's a perverse incentive for contractors, and that seemed to still be a prevailing sentiment when I look back at the videos, and especially the last one I looked at and didn't get to finish it, but what the contractors were talking about, what was happening, because it was going to impact the economic situation. So those are just some comments I wanted to make regarding the petition and some of the things that I just highlighted. And Pastor Underwood is here for any questions that any of the council might have.
Okay, are we all finished with your presentation? Any questions, please, Ms. Wu?
I'm wondering if you have a copy of your petition that you can share with council?
I'm getting ready to.
Perfect.
Hand it to the city clerk.
Okay, and I'm curious, and perhaps I don't quite understand it. So currently, if there is a sewer issue that is on city property, so the sewer issue that I'm saying is a break, let's say the pipe breaks, okay, and it's city property, I can imagine that the, the breaks in sewer lines can occur from any point from the house until it hooks up to the main sewer line. So how is that handled if it's physically, the actual break is on city property?
Mayor Marlin.
Staff is going to do a sewer lateral one oh one during its presentation, specifically because we knew there were some new council members who hadn't heard the presentation before, and I think all of us can use a refresher course. So that question and a lot of other information will be presented when staff does their presentation.
Okay, one more question.
Ms. Wu, again.
So my second question is, is I assume, I know the answer in terms of why the city doesn't pay upfront, but I'm wondering if I can hear more of an official answer and not make an assumption.
That'll be during the presentation.
That'll be during the presentation. Okay, well, then I will hold my questions.
Those are good questions.
Mr. Jacobson.
Will, will you still be here when we see a staff presentation on the reimbursement program later this evening? So because I'd be very, very much interested, I mean, this, this presentation is going to describe some changes, and I'd be very interested to know if these are at least moving in the right direction, or moving in the direction you would wish, or, you know, where, where we stand relative to what, what your desires.
I guess something I didn't say was, it was unfortunate that we were put the next to the last on the agenda when we've been waiting six months for this to come up, and I'm going to plan, we're willing to stay. There's some other people from the subdivision who are here as well, so.
Well, we, we may have somebody that might want to motion changing the order.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll move to change the order since, since for this particular item, we have people with us, citizens with us who are very interested in hearing the discussion. I, I would move that we move this particular item farther forward.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Jacobson, second by Ms. Wu. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any in opposition? Okay, what number was it? It's twelve, we're going to move it to where?
Yeah, let's move it to seven.
Okay, great, we got that done. Are there any other questions or comments for this couple? Looks like there's not. Thank you very much. Okay, where the heck was I? Did this one, okay. Thank you. Okay, I have another public input card. Just not sure if it's the right time. Etha Reed, did you want to speak at this time?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Etha Reed, and I live at, I live at thirteen oh seven West Tremont in Dr. Ellis Subdivision, and I was, I am here to speak on the behalf of the understanding that the sewage that was coming from your property, we want to take, we'll take responsibility of that part on our property line, but asking the city that they would take full responsibility for anything that occurs past the property, our property line into the main line. And we had been told before that there was going to be a reimbursement program for us. We would rather not have the reimbursement. We want the city to just take their responsibility, so we won't have to come up with that money to get it done and wait for you to reimburse us, because some did not get reimbursed that has had it done. So we're asking you to take the responsibility of it and allow us to do whatever we have to do if we possibly can.
Any questions or comments?
And if I may say one other thing, we have been having some terrible problem with backup sewage in that area, and I'm concerned very much about the health issues in that. I have a granddaughter that has children, is in a home that she just, we purchased, and she moved into it a few years ago, and we've been having raw sewage backup in her basement, and she's about to have a new baby, and we definitely don't want a baby under the circumstances as such. And some of that is due to the way the sewage line's been fixed, and we had to sit out last, about two weeks ago. They came out just looking to put a camera into it, and they said that it was hooked up wrong. Nothing they could do. We had to call and plumb ourselves to get out there and open it up, but that's temporally, it's very temporary. That was one of the main reasons I called the city this time, because of the problem that we've been having, thinking they could give me an answer for it, but they said it was hooked up wrong in the first place. So please have an answer for me and work this problem out. I live up, and I have a few other properties there. I pay pretty close to ten thousand dollars a year for taxes, and I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair to have to deal with that.
Okay, any questions or comments? Mayor Marlin.
What address was that?
I live at thirteen oh seven West Tremont, Urbana.
With, with the property where you?
That's Dr. Ellis, oh, the one where the backup is, is twelve, can you help me on that one? Twelve oh four. Ellis Drive, right off of Goodwin. She had next-door neighbor had sewage problem. They opened up his sewage, and it all came the very next day, which was Thanksgiving, came right up in her basement with the whole family over at her house. Just they got up, moved into a new home, and she was so excited about it, had the whole family. We had to deal with raw sewage on a Thanksgiving day.
Anybody, Ms. Wu?
So my mom's a landlord in town and had the exact same thing, actually, right around the corner from here. It's not fun. It makes you nervous when you have rain coming down really hard, whether or not it's going to happen in your house. So one of the things, in addition to doing the sewer lines, I noticed it's on the agenda that I don't know if you've had an opportunity to see, is the, there is also a sewer, let me see here, sewer ejection pump, so a program to cost-share for property owners to put in some device, I am assuming, and we'll hear more about that later on. Is it possible the whole thing is moved? Is that correct? So the whole, so that's coming up, so hopefully that might address some of your concerns.
I sure hope so.
Yeah.
And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have three public input cards here for folks that wish to say something but don't want to come up and speak. My first one here is the last name of Abdullah, I believe. I support the Dr. Ellis Subdivision. And oppose, thank you, the sewer line reimbursement program. We would rather the city pay it upfront. Walther Reed, Dr. Ellis Subdivision petition for the city to pay front for repair, upfront for repairs beyond our property line. And is that Jaclyn?
Yep.
Reverend Jaclyn Minor, on behalf of the Ministry Alliance of Champaign-Urbana and Vicinity. Did you want to speak? Because there's no comment on this card.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I come in behalf of the Ministry Alliance of Champaign-Urbana, and we come to stand with this wonderful community, and in the honor and in the spirit of Renee Renfro, hopefully something can be done. They have been going through this for a long time. They're homeowners who are good citizens, who pay their taxes, and who need to have some resolve. So we come in support of them having this resolved as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Okay, any questions or comments for her? I see none, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have two more cards, and they are both marked to be read at the time of the agenda item, so. Okay. So that's all that's left for public input, then. I think we can move on to our presentation by Dr. Blumstrand from Pulse Point. Thank you for rearranging with us.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you very much for having me. My name is actually Bob Holloway. Dr. Blumstrand sends his apologies for not being able to make the invitation tonight due to a personal matter, so I'm here to pinch it for him. So I wanted to thank the council for the invitation to come present about a new app that has been launched within Champaign County on October twenty-third called Pulse Point. Pulse Point is a CPR crowdsourcing application. Pulse Point is a CPR crowdsourcing application that is connected with the nine-one-one center, MetCad. It identifies as the call is entered, if CPR is needed, and will activate citizen-trained responders if they're within a small geographic area, relatively less than a quarter mile, as long as the call is within a, a public location. The importance of that is there are roughly a thousand people a day that die from cardiac arrest in the United States. Heart disease is the leading cause of death in the U.S., and the American Heart Association estimates about three hundred and fifty thousand people a year suffer from this disease. Survival rates across the country are pretty dismal. At best, they're about nine to eleven percent, so a one in ten chance of survival from an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest event. Champaign County within President's Regional EMS, we track cardiac arrest data from the calls that our agencies respond to, and we, we mirror the national standard, so we're right around eight, eight to eleven percent as well. Bystander CPR, when you can get CPR to someone who needs it before professional help arrives, that chance of survival goes up as, as high as threefold. It takes about, within city limits, it takes about five minutes from the time that the call is answered, nine-one-one, to receive a fire department response, and, and you'll get an ALS ambulance in less than eight, ninety percent of the time. Within four minutes, you'll have a forty percent reduction in survival rate if no CPR is provided. So, the idea of the app is to crowdsource and be able to allow citizen responders to be able to provide bystander CPR until professional help arrives. All right? In addition, we're raising awareness of out-of-hospital cardiac arrest, and the idea is also to improve the amount of people that know how to do CPR. Seventy percent of CPR, of CPR events or cardiac arrests occur outside the hospital, most of those are inside the home, and so if someone knows how to do CPR because they wanted to download this, this very neat app, then hopefully they'll be able to do CPR when it's most needed on, on a loved one in their own space without the, the activation. We launched on October twenty-third, since then, we've had a thousand people download the app within Champaign County and follow us. We've had three activations so far, our very first one was in Urbana on November fifth in the afternoon. It actually happened across the street from Carl Hospital at the Circle K gas station. There were eight citizen responders notified of the event, and unfortunately, that victim did not survive because it had happened more than, more than twenty minutes in advance. The other two events happened in Champaign, and I'm still awaiting final discharge data to, to see if we have a CPR saved from there. But, the idea is that we want, we have a pledge, a commitment to improve cardiac arrest survival rates within, within Champaign County and within the communities that we serve. We would like to see survival rates as high as forty-five to fifty percent, which is four to five times higher than what they are now. So, thank you again, and I'd be happy to answer any kind of questions you have for me.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
So, I can understand getting the call for help if you know CPR, how is it actually triggered? Is that something MetCad does when they get the call?
So, the app actually reads the call data in real time and will identify based off of the coding, which is rather way technical beyond my, my expertise, but it'll identify a situation where CPR is needed, and will automatically pull the GPS location of that call, and will compare it to the database of responders that are available inside that geo-fence of that quarter of a mile, and will automatically push out an emergency alert tone on that app user's phone, much like a tornado warning or, or a, an amber alert.
So, the person who's having the medical emergency has to have the app on their phone?
No, I'm sorry, absolutely not. The, as long as someone calls nine-one-one, it'll alert anybody else who's around in that area.
Okay.
And, once the, the user, the responder clicks okay on the app, on the notification, it'll pull up a Google map of the, of the incident, where they are in relation to that incident, and then where the nearest AED is.
I see, okay, thanks.
Yep.
Mayor Marlin, are you putting your hand up?
No.
Oh.
So-
Gotcha. Mr. Jacobson.
So, let me be absolutely certain, who has the app on their phone? The person who calls nine-one-one, or the, or the person who knows CPR and will respond?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping everybody.
Everybody, yeah, okay.
I'm hoping everybody. All right, the idea is that we're not interfering with the process of, of getting help, so the, the process of recognizing the emergency, calling nine-one-one, talking to the trained emergency medical dispatcher, that process is, is uninhibited. The idea, it's on the backend, it's after the call has already been taken, and there is emergency responders on the way, that the app will recognize that CPR is needed and activate other area responders, so bystanders essentially. Does that make sense?
Okay, so, so, I'm just a person, I don't, let's say I'm not qualified to do CPR, although maybe I should go through the training because I haven't, but, but say I'm not, but somebody, I'm with somebody who needs immediate assistance, then I simply call nine-one-one, and that will trigger everything.
Absolutely. So, for example, let's say we're at the grocery store, and a loved one that you're with suffers cardiac arrest, so you call nine-one-one on your cellphone, and you get a MetCad responder, right? Urbana Fire Department gets dispatched, whoever the ambulance service from Medic One is at the time gets dispatched, all of that is happening, happening as normal. Under normal terms, you wouldn't receive help until professional help arrives, so until Urbana Fire or, or the, the ambulance shows up. Now, if I'm also at, at the grocery store, and I get an emergency alert tone on my phone, and I'm over in the produce aisle, and I can pull up my phone, and I can find that you guys are on the opposite end of the store, I can go help and do CPR until professional help arrives.
Mr. Miller.
I just had a question about that particular part, but I know you're not the app guy, obviously, you're gonna make the app, and I don't know if they've given you any more information, but, you know, for example, Uber is a multinational, international corporation, and sometimes they don't even know where I am on the app. Is there any reason that you've been given to lead to believe that this app is going to be more accurate at identifying the correct location within, you know, meters' feet of a person's actual location? Because if you and I are both standing in there on most GPS apps in that, in that mall, then it just registers to the building, and it doesn't really even, you know, I might know you're in there, but I don't know where you are.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's only as good as the information that it's getting. So, if, for example, if you're in an area of low, low service, and your GPS transmission is not as accurate as it would be maybe in a, in a better service area, it's, it might have a margin of error there, correct? The idea is, so hopefully I can get, hopefully the responder can get close enough to hear for a shout for help.
Sure. Have you seen the app in action?
Yes.
So, when it brings it up to a responder, does it, for, does it just show like a map image? Does it also possibly include a description? Because I feel like that's maybe something MetCad folks could put in there, and if you're in touch with these developers who are doing this app, if they haven't considered it, it's definitely something they should, that's some kind of physical description of the location of the person would probably, you know, like produce aisle, you know, east, east side of store, northeast side of store, or so on and so forth.
I'll certainly bring that up with our, I have a team meeting up next week, so I'll certainly bring that up, but as far as I understand it, it is just the, the GPS location from the address that, that MetCad call ticker puts in.
Well, tell them they might want to consider some supplementary information to help somebody find somebody else.
Sure. Absolutely.
And I know we're all about achieving public awareness here, and people watch at home who may not be here, and I've taken CPR training a number of times over my, over my young life, and it's always kind of changing. I don't know if the standards are today, that it's good to give advice about those kinds of things in a public forum without going through the whole training course, but if you think that it is, and you could dispel some myths, because I know that some that are, of some that are out there, now might be a good time to do so.
Absolutely. So, first and foremost, I represent American Heart Association Training Center for President's Health, so I do, I manage a large program of CPR instructors, and, and so I'm always an advocate for, for getting an official certification card, whether that's through Red Cross or American Heart Association, or another internationally recognized entity to be able to, to show demonstratably those kinds of skills. However, what, what we're talking about here with Pulse Point and the responding app is, is purely bystander, hands-only compression CPR. So, with that, the idea is that doing compressions in the center of the chest, pushing at a depth of about two inches, at a rate of a hundred, a hundred and twenty beats a minute, in other words, just pushing hard and fast, is better than no CPR at all. And even if you're doing it wrong with both hands tied behind your back, or, is better than nothing. So, the idea is, something is better than, than standing by, and certainly do not feel like we need to give breaths if we don't feel comfortable doing that.
What is the standard, like the baseline training for a person that is required to want to volunteer for this?
So, to volunteer for this is just to, to, to understand the concept of hands-only CPR. So, it, really, the, the, the Heart Association has several one-minute videos online, the app itself has resources on, on how to do CPR, will even show you how, how to push, it even has a metronome that will click the beat to a hundred beats a minute to, to help you along with that. So, no formal training is, is required in order to be able to use the app.
I was just curious if someday this might expand, it seems like now more people are dying from overdose than sudden cardiac arrest, and I wonder if maybe someday this would expand to people being able to recognize heroin overdoses and act on that.
There is a, a firm that was awarded an FDA grant because they were able to develop a crowdsourcing app for Narcan responders, for naloxone, which is an antidote to, to opiates, and they were distributing it among crowdsourcing drivers like Uber and Lyft.
Might be something in the future, so, any other questions or comments? I guess not, thank you very much, that was great.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, it looks like we've got a, I'm sorry, thank you, I almost got off track there, we're gonna have our discussion about the sewer lateral reimbursement program.
You have staff reports.
Oh, staff first. I was on the right track. Staff report, that's where I was going. Libby Horwitz.
Good evening, try to make it quick. Start off with some large developments that happened in October. So, Bucie Bank, we did report on this in September, but we learned that they actually added, they exceeded the number of employees we thought they were adding, they added seventy employees as opposed to the fifty that were expected. This actually consolidated all of their wealth management employees into their Urbana location, that's all of that program, so that not only brought extra employees, but will bring extra customers as well. U-Haul had their grand opening as well, that's in their spot at twenty-ten South Philo in the former Ruler Foods building. I know many of us went to their ribbon cutting, thank you for showing up, I think we were very impressed by their car hitch installation facility, as well as their climate-controlled indoor and outdoor spaces that they have available. Leek and Sutton's is a project that's been underway for over a year now, so that completed and held their grand opening at their second location, and that is their second location for a family-owned business that's been in business for over sixty years. They actually also worked with the Small Business Administration, both for counseling, and they received an SBA-backed 504 loan. Other exciting news is TWG Development did finish purchasing Aspen Court after being approved for Illinois Housing Development Authority low-income housing tax credits. So, that's going to be a twelve-point-one million-dollar renovation project, and that's a hundred and forty rental units in, in a series of single and two-story structures. Sorry? And then, talking about some future development, how we're trying to bring in some extra development, city staff talked to thirteen new and expanding businesses, so that's talking to businesses we already have here, doing checkups, seeing if anybody is expanding, or new businesses who might want help with incentives or location advice as well. Staff also attended three networking events and attended the Fall Illinois Enterprise Zone Association Conference. For Thinker Banner Marketing, staff representatives from both marketing and economic development attended the annual University of Illinois Employee Expo, that's the first time, thank you, Mayor, for suggesting that. That's part of our ongoing Thinker Banner Marketing campaign. Staffing news for Market at the Square, Sterling Vollman left his position as Market at the Square Coordinator, and Brian Heaton will serve as the interim market coordinator. Some upcoming events to be aware of, November nineteenth, from ten AM till five PM, will be the Third Annual Art Expo, some more information is in there. November twenty-eighth, from five-thirty PM till seven PM, Urbana Business Association Connections Over Cocktails at Bluebird Boutique. November twenty-eighth, twelve to one-thirty, that's going to be the quarterly business and development luncheon, that'll be a property showcase from different developers and landowners as well as the city. And then December fourth, first, from four to eleven PM, is Urbana First Fridays. Some other development that has occurred, Wicked Rascal did open, and that's at two-eighteen West Main. Borchers has started their construction. A-plus VIP Lounge completed their renovation at two-fourteen West Main, as did MTD, sorry, MTD Training. Cunningham Children's Home has started construction, and there is now Eight-O-Nine Nevada Apartments has put in plans for review and are under review. So, as always, there is data in the next two pages that you can look over, are there any questions?
Ms. Wu.
So, you just saw that Eight-O-Nine Nevada Apartments is under review?
Mm-hmm. So, that means planning is currently reviewing those plans.
Okay, I thought they were finalized.
That might have been since the report happened.
No, they've had construction going on now for about a month and a half.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay, I was just like, what other reviews are going on?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, and back to our, yes, Mayor Marlin.
Staff report.
Oh, there's another one?
That would be me.
Oh.
Just a quick one.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know, I returned, I spent two and a half days in Indianapolis for the Mayor's Institute on City Design. That was a workshop where seven mayors from the Midwest were invited to meet with really nationally-recognized professionals in architecture, landscape architecture, urban planning and transportation, and each of us brought a project or a challenge in our cities, presented a case study, and then we just listened to these, this resource team brainstorm about approaches and ideas on our projects. So, I brought the site across the street, which is a nine-square-block area that contains the Lincoln Square Mall, the Landmark Hotel, and city-owned parking, and the total, and that is close to sixteen acres. And it was, it was one of the most energizing and innovative and creative sessions I've ever participated in, so we, we are due to get a summary of the comments and actually some, and other, other materials in a few weeks, and when I get those, I think, I'd like to come to council and show you what the PowerPoint I presented, and then share some of the feedback that I got, but it was, it was just an amazing experience, and no public funds were spent on this, this was paid for by the U.S. Conference of Mayors and the National Endowment for the Arts. So, it's a program they've run for twenty-five or thirty years, they've had over a thousand mayors over the years participate in these project, in these, in these experiences. So, that was that. This week, several city staff, including myself, legal, and folks from community development and fire, are in a week-long training for national incident management training, so this is part of, this is through FEMA, and city officials are required to be trained in order to be eligible for federal emergency disaster funds. So, we are in class eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday of this week, so if I don't respond to emails or phone calls, that's why, until late at night or very early in the morning. But anyway, a number of us are in training this week as well. And finally, I wanted to thank city clerk Charlie Smythe and Natalie Candy Marquez, our communications coordinator, for redoing the brochure that you'll find at the back of the room. It's, it's beautiful and informative, and a very nice update on how citizens can participate in city council meetings, and, and actually, a little bit about how our government is organized, so thank you very much.
Okay, so now we're gonna have our discussion and education session on the sewer lateral reimbursement program.
All right. So I'm Justin Swinford. I'm a civil engineer. I'm in the Engineering Division for Drainage and Development. And then with me is Brad Bennett, the Assistant City Engineer. As Mayor Marlin mentioned, we'll start with kind of a sewer, sanitary sewers 101, just as a refresher for anyone that hasn't seen this presentation, or for anyone watching at home that's unfamiliar with sanitary sewers. First, kind of as a reference, or in reference to something mentioned earlier, I do want to stress that anytime any resident or property owner has a sanitary sewer backup, to please call the city first immediately, because in some cases, there are things we can do to help. And we've got a pretty good response team in our sewer crew. Even after hours, we have people available to respond to sanitary sewer backups. And too often, we hear of people hiring contractors to determine that it's, can be a city, or an issue that the city would be responsible for. And then they end up paying those contractors just to tell them that. So again, with sewer backups, please just contact the city first. So for sanitary sewers, in March of this year, we presented to the city council with a history of our sanitary sewer lateral pavement reimbursement program, which is a long name for a program in which we reimburse people for the cost of pavement repairs related to sanitary sewer lateral replacements or repairs. So we'll get into the program and some changes to it in a little bit. First, we're going to discuss sanitary sewers, and then we'll talk about the history of the, not just the program, but other discussions that we've had, both internally and with council over the years regarding responsibility and ownership of sanitary sewer laterals. All right. So our sanitary sewers can, as far as ownership goes, can be separated into three main categories. There's the sanitary sewer interceptors, which are large diameter pipes that run to the treatment plant. And those are owned and operated by the Urbana Champagne Sanitary District. And we have a map here in the next slide that'll show those. Collector sanitary sewers are sewers that are owned and operated by the city of Urbana. Typically, eight-inch to 15-inch diameter sewers that collect sewers from each individual home and convey that flow into the interceptor sewers. And finally, we have sanitary sewer laterals, which are the pipes that connect those individual homes to the sanitary, the collector sewers, or the sewer main, as we typically refer to it. So the lateral will be something we'll refer to quite a bit in this presentation. And so here we show, hopefully it's clear enough, the three different categories of sanitary sewers. The red line shown there near the football field is, would be an interceptor sewer. And as you can see, the green lines connect to that red line in multiple locations. And those green lines then run down most streets, or sometimes it's in the street, other times it may be in backyards. So we have a good mix of both of those. And then what's shown in the kind of pinkish-purple would be a typical sanitary sewer lateral running from the house to the sanitary sewer in the street. And so here's an elevation view of what a typical sewer lateral would look like and how it connects to the sanitary sewer. So that pipe, those pipes that internally collect from the plumbing system or floor drains within the house would then run underground to the sanitary sewer main, which is either in the right-of-way or in an easement that would allow the city access to it. So in the city of Urbana, public sewer ownership stops at the connection. We typically call that the sewer tap. And private ownership then picks up. So it's, it doesn't really relate to the property line or the right-of-way line. It's just a matter of the city owns and operates the large diameter sewer and those connections. And outside of that, it's private responsibility for maintenance and repairs.
Excuse me, Justin, can you say that again, please?
Yeah. So what's shown in green here would be the responsibility of the property owner for any repairs or maintenance. If this, if that green line were to collapse or get clogged, it would be the responsibility of the property owner to remedy that issue. If there's a backup and the property owner were to call the city, and we found that the whole main was backed up to a certain point, then that would be a scenario where the city would take responsibility for clearing out that backup or making a repair if there were a collapse. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's clear.
Yes, there's going to be a time for discussion, or did you want to ask questions of them?
Just like this here, and I'm going to ask, like, when this goes into the property between the, just like the other side of the street, between the house and the sidewalks of the person across the street, that ladder, so...
If they can answer that question, that's fine. But I think after that, we're going to have a...
So which one would this be? Number one, two, or three? So when we go back to this, I will have that question.
Okay.
Which slide is that, Justin?
Oh, this slide is number five.
Okay. And then we're going to have a discussion after this, at which time, hopefully, we can have a back-and-forth exchange and answer any questions.
All right. And so, and then we just have a paragraph from the city code that establishes that change in ownership from the city sanitary sewer to the private sewer lateral, and how that's defined. So from here, I'll let Brad take over, and he'll discuss some, or summarize some discussions that have been had in the past.
Thanks. I appreciate being able to present to you this evening. We're going to talk a little bit first about some of the options that were previously considered by council, so you can know what options were considered and how they came to the decision to go with the pavement reimbursement program. And talk a little bit about a survey that we did of what other central Illinois communities, as well as statewide in Illinois, what other communities' programs were regarding sanitary sewer lateral ownership. So to start out with, there was five options that the council evaluated. This initially came up in October 2007, so almost a decade ago is when we first started looking at this. And those first three bullet items are kind of what we looked at in 2007. So we looked at sewer lateral insurance, the pavement reimbursement program, and what we called an interest subsidy program. And for each one of those, I'll go through and explain briefly, you know, what that involved, and we'll go over the pros and cons of that, so you can kind of see, you know, what things were considered by council in making their decision. And then the last two were kind of evaluated in 2013, and that was where the city would repair the laterals within the, in the right-of-way. And then the final one was city ownership of the laterals within right-of-way. So starting out with sewer lateral insurance, and what this is, is just simply a program that homeowners and property owners can pay into voluntarily, and they get a certain financial coverage for any problems with their sanitary sewer lateral. Point out, this is an existing program that's run by American Water here in Champagne, Urbana. Any resident can sign up for it currently. We kind of go through real quickly what some of the advantages of it are. Number one, it would cover the cost of lateral repairs, and also recovers the cost of cleaning or removing roots from the lines if you actually get a blockage of the line versus a structural failure or collapse. It's voluntary. You can sign up for it. You know, it's an established program. American Water claims that over 50% of the people in Champagne or Urbana already participate in this program. I have no way of verifying whether that is correct or not, but that's what their claim is. You know, an advantage for that is, you know, that's run by American Water. It doesn't take any city resources, staff time, or otherwise, you know, for that program. And another advantage of that is, the resident, when they contact American Water for a claim, American Water takes care of hiring the contractor and getting the permits and the restoration of the property afterwards. Disadvantages of the program, it's expensive, $9 a month fee for it. There's a limitation on repair costs. My next slide will cover that. It covers up to $8,000 in repair. I think it's $4,000 for pavement removal and replacement costs, and $4,000 for pipe repair costs. They do charge a trip fee surcharge, and there is a limited contractor selection. They select the contractor for you. You're stuck with who they pick. You don't get to choose your own contractor as part of that. So this is just off the American Water Line Saver Program, which is what their sewer lateral program is. They also offer one for your water service line as well. I won't go through the details. You know, this is kind of promotional stuff for them. Like I said, there are some limitations, like any insurance program, as far as, you know, they'll only cover up to $8,000. And like I mentioned, they do have a charge for coming out and performing either cleaning or repairs on your lines. That's that trip charge. So moving on to the second option considered, that was the pavement reimbursement...
Can I just ask a quick question on the last one?
Sure.
Since Urbana, if we'll be, we'll be covering all the pavement repair costs. Do you know if this $9 a month is what they charge in any city, or would they take that into consideration and that they aren't going to have to pay that $4,000 for pavement repair because the city covers it? Would they consider a discount for Urbana residents?
They do not. The $9 is a kind of a national fee that they charge. If you go to their website, that's actually what they list. I guess one interesting, and you bring up an excellent point there, is for any resident participating in the American Water Save, Line Saver Program, you'd be eligible not only for the $4,000 pavement reimbursement from the insurance program, but you'd also be in reimbursement, or be eligible for the $5,000 pavement reimbursement from the city. So you could get up to $9,000.
So they'd reimburse the homeowner even though they're already being reimbursed by the city?
Correct.
Okay. So it's might be worth $9.
It's a lottery ticket. So for the pavement reimbursement program, what this involves, and Justin mentioned a little bit early, but earlier, but here, the resident makes the repair of the sewer laterals, since they are the owner and responsible for the operation and maintenance of the lateral. They make the repair, and then the city reimburses them for the extraordinary cost of pavement removal and replacement. So when you have a sewer that breaks down under a city street or sidewalk, usually most of the cost of that repair is for the removal and replacement of that pavement, whether it's concrete, or asphalt, or brick. That's usually most of the cost of the sewer repair. So the advantage of it is, it does typically cover a significant portion of that cost, you know, versus someone that maybe has a sewer that's, you know, runs in their backyard. There's a lot more expense when you have to replace it on the street. Disadvantages of it, it did result in an increase in the sewer benefit tax. That's an additional expense, so we have to, you know, raise revenues to be able to pay for that. We did have to place a limitation on repair costs. The way we had it structured, there was a maximum limit, and there still currently is. We reimburse up to $5,000. Anything above that is on the resident. It does require additional staff time. I mean, that's one of the things that Justin does, is he manages that program. So he has to, you know, process the applications when they come in and make sure that finance cuts the checks, reimburse the property owners for that. And obviously, for the, for residents, it does place a burden on them. They have to front that money upfront. Typically, we can get them reimbursed within two or three weeks of their application being submitted, so we try to turn that around as quickly as we can to reimburse them. The reason that we do the reimbursement program that way is because we, the city, don't have a contract with the contractor that's performing that sewer repair. Additionally, because we are a municipal unit of government, we have to pay prevailing wages. And we also have other requirements, you know, through our human relations, you know, committee and insurance requirements and bonding requirements, that the contractors that typically do that type of work locally would not be able to meet. So this way, we don't, we, the city, do not have a contractual relationship with the sewer contractor performing the work for the resident. We just reimburse the resident directly. That gets us around that.
Yes, sir.
So Brad, you're basically saying that, that the cost of labor would be much cheaper if it was done by the homeowner than if it was managed by the city?
Correct.
Because of those requirements that the city has contracting work?
Absolutely. And that kind of goes back to, oops, I'm sorry. There we go. It's up to the owner to hire the contractor. They get to pick who they want to perform the work. And there are several good local sewer contractors. Typically, it's a different type of contractor that performs the work for residents than it is the contractors that the city uses for its repairs. We have a tendency to have more of the union, larger contractors that, you know, are more expensive because of their equipment and their labor costs. The third option considered was an interest subsidy program. This was kind of a novel concept. Under this concept, the city would assist the resident by buying down the interest rate on a loan they would take out to perform the work. You know, it was a way to kind of subsidize the repair without directly necessarily giving a reimbursement to the property owner. You know, the advantage was, it lowered the rate on their loan to do the repair. Obviously, there's a number of disadvantages with that. It didn't lower the cost of the repair for the resident. They still had to pay it. It would just be at a lower interest rate. We had some concerns that would be difficult to administrate, you know, administratively. We'd have to partner with financial institutions to be able to do that. There's also an issue of, you know, only part of the sewer repair cost is related to pavement. Granted, it's usually the most significant part of it, but there is a portion of the, you know, cost that is responsible for the resident. You know, they'd have to repair the pipe of it. We couldn't, you know, how you'd split that out from the pavement reimbursement cost was a question. And, you know, kind of the same issues with the pavement reimbursement, you know, would be an increase in sewer benefit tax, how to come up with that cost to lower the interest rate. And then, once again, the owner has to hire the contractor, so they have to front, you know, that money upfront, or get, you know, get it from the bank upfront.
Ms. Wu.
So just so I understand correctly, this proposal would have basically the city offsetting the cost of interest?
Correct. So lowering the interest rate of the loan to pay for the sewer repair.
But we wouldn't actually lower it. We would just cover it. So we can't lower the tax, the, can we?
Well, essentially, essentially, the city would pay the financial institution an amount of money to offer artificially low interest rates.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I mean, when this option was considered, it very quickly fell out of favor as not being really practical. I think council's intention was, the sewer lateral reimbursement program was more attractive than the industry, interest subsidy program. And then, like I said, these last two options were actually considered in 2013. So one was city repairs the lateral in right-of-way. So rather than the resident hiring the contractor to do it, under this scenario, when a pipe had a structural deficiency, the city would come in and take responsibility for that, dig that up and fix that. Obviously, the advantage of that is, you know, the city covers the cost of lateral repairs. That allows us not to own and maintain the lateral. We estimate that we have over 6,600 laterals that are within the right-of-way. It's about 38 miles of pipe. We currently maintain a little over 100 miles of pipe with the collector sewer system that we own. So it is, you know, if we take over ownership and maintenance, it does add a significant amount of infrastructure that we're currently not taking care of. And then, you know, the advantage is... And then, you know, the advantage is the owner doesn't have to hire the contractor. Disadvantage of it, obviously, it costs more than the sewer lateral reimbursement program. That gets to the comment about, you know, our contractors have higher rates than what the local contractors have. So, you can see what that cost increase was. We talked about it would not cover blockages and roots, which is actually the cause of most of the sewer backups we have. Those are considered maintenance items. You know, if you put something, whether it's grease, or a diaper, or something down your plumbing fixtures, and it plugs the pipe. I think most people think that's reasonably an expectation that the property owner has to maintain that. We are a tree city, we have lots of roots in our lines. So, like I said, those are actually probably the two most common causes of backup. Those wouldn't be covered. We'd only cover the failure, the structural collapse of the pipe. The owner would be responsible still for the operation and maintenance of the pipe. So, if it plugged or had to be cleaned, it would be up to the property owner. It would require additional city services to manage this, probably even more than the pavement reimbursement, because we have to have a technician out with the contractor while they're making the repair to make sure it's done properly and make sure we assess everything for the billing of it. And probably the biggest thing is it would have a real negative impact on local contractors. There's a number of contractors out there that do this type of work, and we would essentially be taking their livelihood away from them because they would not be able to do that work in the city of Urbana. Our contractors that the city hired to do, our city sewer repairs would be doing those instead. So, the, at the time, a number of the local contractors came in to voice their opposition to that option. And the final option was city ownership of the laterals within the right of way. In this scenario, the city would actually take ownership of the laterals. So, we would be responsible for the operation and tear and maintenance of those. So, we, you know, the advantage would be it covers the cost of lateral repairs, it covers the cost of the cleaning. The owner doesn't really have to do anything, the city will take care of everything. Disadvantage of it, it significantly raises what we would have to charge for the sanitary sewer benefit tax to cover those costs. If you remember, the previous two scenarios, the sewer lateral reimbursement, that was adding two dollars on a year for an average family. The city repairs of, within the laterals in the right of way added about four. This would add almost seventy-one dollars to the average family sewer bill. We require a property or a clean out at the property line. One of the challenges with the city maintaining the lateral within the right of way, if you go back to the picture we had earlier, is it's hard to determine where the source of the problem is. Usually, you get a backup, this, the toilet's overflowing, and you have to figure out, well, where's that blockage within this green line? Is it in, you know, this portion up here? It's the responsibility of the property owner. If the city takes ownership of this portion, how do we know whether the blockage is up here or here? So, what most communities that have taken ownership of the lateral within the right of way line have done is they require a clean out, similar to the one they have here. Illinois Plumbing Code requires a clean out on any new home construction that, you know, has a sewer lateral. So, you have to have one up at the house. We would have to have an additional one at the property line to give us access and allow us to be able to inspect our portion of the sewer line. So, that was, you know, a fairly significant impact and one of the big components of the cost increase. The owner, I'm sorry, I went far enough. It would obviously require additional city services, and once again, it would have that same negative impact on local contractors. In fact, this would actually widen it because the local sewer cleaning contractors like Schoonover, DNS, they do sewer cleaning and televising. And under this scenario, that would be something that the city would be doing with in-house staff or contracting out to the larger contractors. So, those were the five options considered previously. As part of the 2013 effort, we also did reach out to our local communities to find out what they were doing. So, we sent out surveys to thirteen central Illinois communities. We received twelve responses. The only one that didn't respond here locally was Mattoon. For all twelve of the survey responses, the communities required the property owner to maintain the sanitary sewer service lateral. And then, we found out that six communities or agency offered pavement reimbursement programs for sewer laterals. You can see pavement reimbursement program was a real popular choice for communities to try to reduce the financial burden on their residents for having to do lateral repairs out in the street. So, this was the survey results. I apologize, it's difficult to read. We can provide you with a, with a paper copy of it if you want to read. But to go through them real quick, we had the Village of Rantoul, the Champaign-Urbana sanitary district, City of Bloomington, City of Champaign, City of Decatur, Village of Forsyth, Village of Savoy, City of Danville, City of Charleston, City of Champaign. I'm sorry, I said that one already. City of Springfield, the City of Normal, and City of Peoria. And you can see, like I mentioned, out of all twelve, none of them took ownership responsibility for the sewer lateral within the public right of way. So, we expanded our net even further, and we looked statewide. And we could only come up with seven communities that we heard or thought took responsibility for the sanitary sewer lateral within the right of way. So, we reached out to those agencies. We did get responses from all seven of the agencies. As part of that, we found that, we did find four communities that took ownership of the sewer lateral within the right of way. They were Pekin, Carbondale, Schaumburg, and Addison. We also found out that no community took ownership of the lateral from the right of way to the building. So, this was only from the right of way line to the collector sewer that the communities were taking ownership responsibility. Out of the seven that we surveyed, Rock Island basically offered their own version of the American Water Insurance Program. So, they weren't actually, you know, taking over ownership responsibility. They just offered an insurance program that was equivalent of what American Water did. Carbondale and Schaumburg, those communities did repair, clean, and maintain the sewer laterals within the right of way. They also required clean outs at the property lines. So, the way it worked was Carbondale made that the responsibility of the property owner. They had to pay for the expense of installing a clean out at their property line. And Schaumburg installed those, and that was part of their sewer fee. The City of Addison, which is up in northern Illinois, they installed property or clean outs at the property line anytime they had a backup or blockage for a particular resident. And this was just the state survey results. So, you can see the communities that we reached out to are Rock Island, Carbondale, Galesburg, Village of Schaumburg, City of Pekin, Village of Morton, and Village of Addison. Like I said, those were ones we had heard through different public works, professional groups, and other agencies that those communities might take ownership of that, of the sewer laterals. So, we reached out to them. And like we said, we found four communities statewide that did that. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Justin.
All right. So, now, we'll look back at the pavement reimbursement program, the history of that. The program was established in 2007. Since then, two ordinances have been passed to revise that original program. So, the original program provided a fifty, fifty percent reimbursement up to a maximum of three thousand dollars. So, that would have been, a six thousand dollar repair would have received three thousand dollars. And then, in March of 2013, that was revised to seventy-five percent up to a maximum reimbursement of forty-five hundred dollars. A few months later, that was changed to a one hundred percent reimbursement up to five thousand dollars, which is where the program currently stands. Oh, excuse me. The program was established to assist property owners with the financial burden of removing or replacing street pavement incidental to these lateral repairs. It was recognized that with backyard sewers and sewers that are in the right of way and under pavement, there's, it can be a financial difficulty for homeowners that exists because of that pavement and the need to replace it. We also have standards for replacing that pavement, and we want to do the best we can to keep our road infrastructure in good condition. So, we wanted to provide residents with some financial aid for those repairs. So, fifty-two participants since 2008, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars distributed through those three variations of the program. And as Brad mentioned, the program's funded by sewer benefit tax. So, that two dollar increase has already been implemented that he mentioned earlier. So, this is an example of what a typical sewer pavement repair would look like with some sidewalk, curb and gutter, and street pavement. So, it's hard to tell here, but in this case, the repair went about three-quarters of the way across the street and included quantities for all of those items mentioned. Our current program works such that we'll receive an application once this work is complete, and the contractor is responsible for reporting the quantities and the cost of those repairs and separating that from the cost of doing, of the pipe repair. So, the pavement repair should be a separate cost than the pipe repair because the intent is not to pay for the repair of the pipe. Oftentimes, the contractors will just submit a lump sum and say, this is where we did it, and this is the lump sum. We can interpolate unit prices if we want, but typically, that's not how these contractors work in unit prices. They'll just not throw a number at it, but they will give an, provide an estimate and usually stick to that within, or within a certain range. So, they don't usually operate within a unit price cost for their purposes. For city projects, that's almost exclusively how we operate when it comes to sewer construction or repairs. So, here's a summary of the participation in this program since 2008. It, it can, we can have several reimbursements done in one year or very few. It can be dependent on several different factors. So, we've had a range from one to eleven over the years. And then, this is a breakdown of distributions or reimbursements by ordinance in year. There was a notable shift in the cost of pavement replacement and repair when the program shifted from a partial reimbursement to a full reimbursement. You'll notice that there were a significant number of pavement costs that were over five thousand dollars. Whereas before, with the partial reimbursement, the reported pavement cost was less than five thousand dollars. It was often less than five thousand dollars. So, that was one thing we noticed when looking at the data. And then, similarly, this table shows an increase in the average cost of pavement repairs following the most recent ordinance and revision. With the increased maximum and a hundred percent reimbursement, prices rose about thirteen percent for pavement replacement. So, at the March twenty-seventh meeting this year, we presented three options to city council. The first being take no action, leave the program as is. The second being an increased maximum reimbursement to, you know, recognizing that these, the five thousand dollars does not cover that reimburse, or that cost of pavement repair in all cases. And option three was a unit price program to be developed. So, that was, option three was selected, and it was requested that we develop that unit price program, which we're going to present here. One other comment, there was a request also to discuss with contractors the idea of publishing their unit prices or certain prices ahead of time so that residents could maybe check with them or somehow, and ahead of hiring them to make these repairs. So, that was something that wasn't discussed with contractors. So, first we did, or we sent a survey to contractors just to, A, let them know that we were considering some changes to the program, and B, get their thoughts on it. We did get a pretty good response. It's easy to track some of them down that have participated in this program more often and because they have a vested interest in how, or in any changes. And then, after we got that response and developed the program a little bit more, we held a meeting where we invited the contractors to come in and discuss with us the proposed program. That, at that meeting, we did discuss that concept of publishing prices and sharing that information, and that was met with a generally negative response. So, the unit price program. We looked at the history. We have, you know, these applications on over fifty reimbursements that have been provided. And so, we were able to go back and measure certain quantities of those that have been done because they're, for the most part, those pavement patches are existing and easy to find now. And so, the idea is that the quantities should be something that's easy to measure and verify. A lot of times, we deal with things like cubic yards of backfill or lengths of pipe. But once the work's done, it's really hard to measure those quantities because it's all underground and under the pavement. So, what we determined was to simplify it to quantities of pavement and to wrap all the associated costs, whether it be backfill or, or traffic control or in, and the labor involved, into those unit prices. The benefit of the unit price program would be that the reimbursements made would be proportional more to the cost, or to the amount of the work done and not the cost caused by, or charged by these individual contractors. So, these were the prices that are proposed for the program. These are the prices that were shared with the contractors and met with a generally agreeable response. Again, they were determined using historical data as well as some information available to us through bids that we do for city projects as well. Granted, those bids are usually, or those prices are usually higher because of some stipulations we have for prevailing wages. So, these unit prices were then retroactively applied for compare, for the sake of comparison to reimbursements that have been issued in the past. So, our first example is one where it was a relatively small repair with only eight square yards of concrete pavement, and the reimbursement issued was over forty-six hundred dollars. And that number is adjusted for comparison's sake. So, under the unit price program, the city would only have issued twenty-four hundred dollars. So, while that may look like we're not paying, or we're not assisting the property owner as much in that case, it's also maybe a more effective use of city funds, and that would allow for us to do more in cases like example B, where the total pavement cost was over eleven thousand dollars. And so, that easily qualified for the maximum reimbursement. That's most likely one where the contractor had to cross the entire length of the street. In some cases, if the sanitary sewer is in the parkway or under the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street, that's going to result in a lot more pavement replacement. It's a common scenario in the city. And so, as you can see, there was, there were plenty of quantities of street pavement, sidewalk, and curb and gutter. So, under the proposed unit price reimbursement, that would have increased to almost eleven thousand dollars. So, the, another advantage of the proposed program is it allows us to eliminate the maximum. And again, we're paying for the quantity of the work done. And then, example C is one where, you know, we had several of these where we looked at the cost of a typical pavement repair. And this one still exceeded that five thousand dollars, but we're also still increasing our reimbursement by a hundred and fifty-five dollars. So, and there were other cases where, you know, we may be paid a little bit more or a little bit less. But overall, applied to what we had quantities for, what we were able to meter quantities for, the total reimbursement over the years would have been a difference of about a hundred dollars out of the budget that we, that we have. So, that was kind of a way for us to confirm that we're spending, we're using that same amount of money, but we're distributing it a little more fairly for residents that have to do more pavement repairs. So, in a summary of the program is upon completion of the repair, So in a summary of the program is upon completion of the repair, the property owner would submit an application for reimbursement. It'd be pretty simple for a right-of-way technician to go out and measure the quantities of the pavement, and then the reimbursement would be issued for that. And it would take no longer than the the current application process does other than a quick site visit. And then it's again easier to verify. So with that, we'll just ask for a direction from council on on what to pursue here and take any questions.
Mr. Jacobson.
So one of the issues that we had previously discussed was the unfairness associated with the main line being on one side of the street or the other. Now, the unit pricing seems to take care of that, I guess. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah. So this eliminates that maximum reimbursement.
Okay.
Which would easily cap or, you know, the those repairs would top out at five thousand or well over five thousand dollars.
So the second question is, now, the other issue that the community's brought to us is I guess they would like to be paid upfront as opposed to having to wait, you would say, an average of something like three weeks, four weeks? Do you think that's reasonable turnaround?
Two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks from the time that the that the owner paid, and then the owner, the property owner provides the city with a receipt from the contractor for the payment? Is that, is that what triggers?
And then, so we would have an application in it, which is how it currently works. We have an application form and then an invoice associated with it that needs to be stamped paid so that we know that the resident did in fact pay that amount of money.
Okay. Okay, I guess I'll, I just wanted to clarify those those two points, and I guess I'll just sit back and see how other people react.
Mr. Roberts.
So let me get this figured out straight here. If there is repair on the street that has, if the street and the sidewalk have to be taken out to fix the lateral, is it a private contractor who pours the cement on the street? Is that why then you have to come out and check it or measure it to find out what the unit price is?
Yes.
So why doesn't the city just come out and do the repair on the street? You you manually handle all the street repairs and sidewalk repairs and new sidewalk installations. Why wouldn't the city do that at this point?
Well, that that actually isn't true. Anytime a utility company is doing utility works like Illinois American or Ameren, that utility company actually makes the repair to the street. So they typically hire a contractor to do that type of the work. So you're correct on, you know, for major street reconstruction or resurfacing projects, those are are done by city contractors, you know, or city crews. But anytime it has to do with utility work, it's actually the individual utility that owns that work that actually does the repair on the street.
So I, so I, I challenged that assumption or that use or that mode for this particular process. It would seem to me that rather than have the city come out and double-check the work to find out if it's adequate, it would be, and then to do this reimbursement process, it would be smarter for the city just to go out and do the patch and also on the sidewalk, because we have the ability to do that. We have equipment to pour concrete slabs on the sidewalks. We do that all the time. And I'm sure we probably have the ability to do a patch on the city's street. Is that correct?
We do have that, the the staff and resources for that. I think the time resources required as well as the the cost to the city are where there, it would put the city at a disadvantage that where it would cost the city more to replace that or hire a contractor to replace it and pay prevailing wages as opposed to allowing this private contractor that did the repair to make that pavement repair.
Well, if the city was gonna pay for it anyway, it wouldn't matter what the, yes, it would matter ultimately in the city budget for these kinds of repairs, but we don't have a lot of those kinds of repairs per year. But I was wondering why, okay, we haven't agreed that we're gonna be covering, you know, only, it sounds like we're, what we're looking at is not a full reimbursement. We're only reimbursing up to a certain point. There's a cap on reimbursement here.
There's currently a cap. The proposed program would eliminate any cap, so it would be simply paid per the quantity of.
So there would be a full reimbursement?
Right.
For that part?
Well, it may not be a full reimbursement. It'd be reimbursement based on the unit prices set forth in this program.
But the real problem for the city would be that they couldn't just send a crew out the next day to work on it because, I mean, this, the coordination of all that kind of scheduling would be, I mean, it takes us a year sometimes or two years to get a city sidewalk fixed. I'm not, not, no. I mean, on a plan, we have a plan for repair.
Right. Yeah, I think that, you know.
So that's why, that's why a private contractor is more efficient for the homeowner.
Right. And, you know, they're hired to do the job from start to finish, so they're gonna show up and tear everything out and then put everything back in and and then move on. And and if, you know, there was a year where we had eleven of these. So if three of those happened in one week and maybe some neighbors get together and they decide they're all just gonna do it at the same time, then or we have three in the same week and all over the city, then it would be hard to coordinate the replacement of that with city staff.
So the real problem is, is how fast can the repair be done? And the city just can't guarantee a quick repair because it's complex, because the city's got obligations all over the place to complete other work. All right. So that's why we're not just saying that the city could just come out and and manage it.
Well, that was one of the options considered. I mean, we did look at an option where the the city would do the repair. You know, the the pavement reimbursement program was selected by by council over that option.
Right. And there are reasons. Okay. I'm just, I'm just fleshing out the reasons.
Mr. Gray, did you have something to say on that?
No, I think the answer came about in a roundabout way, but clearly the the responsibilities of the operations division to do street repairs is overwhelming and underfunded. And for us to take this on in addition to what we can not even keep up with doesn't make sense.
Okay. Mr. Adams.
All right. A lot of stuff. So first of all, speaking to Dr. Ellis subdivision and Dr. Underwood and Bishop and Eldridge Carr in particular, who have come night after night after night after night, Monday after Monday, rain, sleet or snow to continue to bring this issue, to shine a light on this issue. And I I thank you for that. I commend you for that because as citizens, that's part of our responsibilities. And I do not think that it's a coincidence that on the night that this discussion is planned is the same night that you all want to do your presentation, right? Which I think is the best possible scenario because questions can get answered, but we could also hear the concerns more clearly articulated. And I think it's a very principled position that you all are taking because it's not as if on a routine basis, folks from Dr. Ellis are being directly affected by this on and on and on. It's actually an issue that you've brought to light that's been an issue all over this city. And a lot of homeowners are being adversely affected by it because the majority of homeowners, when they buy your home, you have no idea of this hidden cost. Right? You have no idea that this thing is looming underneath and it's going to be something that you're going to be held responsible for. So I think you've done an amazing job of making us think about this and try to address this. And it's not, I think it's, it's more than admirable that it's not just about Dr. Ellis subdivision, actually. It's it's bigger than that. But it it came from a space where where it was happening for you all more than any, than what I saw of anybody else. And so my concern, I wanted to say that I didn't understand why if we're told that the right-of-way stuff, trees and everything else, we're not responsible for, or we we can't touch those things as homeowners. But yet, the diagram that you showed showed what was clearly in the right-of-way of the city is somehow the responsibility of the homeowner. I don't understand that. Either it's the city handles stuff in the right-of-way and the homeowner handles stuff on their side of the property or it's not that. I don't know how we can have it one way above ground and a different way below ground.
Well, actually, there is some above-ground stuff within the right-of-way. That is the responsibility of the property owner. You're.
Yeah, you want me to cut the grass, but you don't want me to to cut down the tree or to trim the tree.
Yeah. Well, and your driveway approach is something, you know, if somebody's driveway approach deteriorates, it's the responsibility of the property owner. Your mailbox, which is typically located in the right-of-way, is the responsibility of the property owner to maintain. So you know, right-of-way is really just, you know, it's city-owned property, but it supports primarily, you know, the transportation system and then, you know, typically, we have a lot of utilities located within it to serve the residences.
Yeah, but that still doesn't speak to the underground issue. The lateral, which is the most expensive component of this, is being put on on the, it's underneath the city right-of-way. And it's the most expensive aspect of the project. And it's being told, it's being said to the homeowner that it's your responsibility. I don't find that to be a fair process. How much of the two dollars a month or that we've added to the taxpayers, to all the citizens, how much money has that generated for us, for the program?
I mean, I think typically on an annual year, it's between like fifty thousand, around fifty thousand dollars.
And how long have we been doing that?
Since two thousand eight.
So then, for fifty thousand dollars times, what's that, nine years? So that's forty, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something? Almost five hundred thousand dollars. And we've spent a hundred and fifty. So then we have three hundred and fifty thousand that we could use to do some of the other things, like the upfront costs or some other creative way that we could address this concern for the folks in Dr. Ellis subdivision, then, right? Okay. The the contractors, you said there was a thirteen percent increase in the cost of the of the pavement over at a particular point? Could you expound upon that a little bit, Justin? You 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 said it. I was trying to understand what you meant by that.
So it, when the program changed from a partial reimbursement of either fifty percent or there's a short time and there's a seventy-five percent reimbursement to a full reimbursement, a hundred percent reimbursement, the cost of pavement repairs, the reported cost of those pavement repairs increased about thirteen percent. So we recognize that as possibly being due to the fact that, you know, if if contractors and property owners know that there's five thousand dollars available for pavement repair, then the pavement repair is probably gonna cost about five thousand dollars. So that.
But that wouldn't be, I I don't see the homeowner saying, yeah, make it five thousand dollars. That's gonna be the contractor who's going to say, oh, there's a program I could charge a little bit more because I don't have to do a unit pricing. I can just say this is how much it costs, and then they get the access and use the reimbursement program, right?
Correct.
So it's not the homeowner. It's actually the contractor that's, in essence, gouging, right?
Correct.
So what do we have, what can we do to monitor that to, as an oversight, to make sure that that's not happening? The unit pricing is the best way to do that.
Yes, that's the goal of the program or one of them.
Okay. Now, the unit pricing part of this, what I saw was that in the most expensive repair, it would add six hundred dollars in reimbursement in the most expensive case, right?
No, it was over five thousand dollars additional reimbursement. So the the first bullet point here shows the reimbursement that was issued for this repair. And this, so this is a repair that has been completed. And that was the reimbursement issued, and this was the reported cost of that repair.
Okay.
So then, if this repair had been done under this unit price program or proposing, this would have been the reimbursement issued. And so it's an increase of five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars to the resident.
I understand that better now. I thought it was something different. All right. And some other thoughts and questions that I may have, but I'll wait for now.
Okay. Mr. Miller.
Can we go back to the slide before that one where the the city reimbursement was only about half? I'm curious as to why the larger cost one got like almost ninety percent of the cost and this one only gets about fifty percent of the cost.
So the, so an example A here, this is one where it was a relatively small pavement replacement. And so the reported cost was close to that five thousand dollar maximum. And and I'd actually have to, I don't have the year listed here, but this would have been in the one hundred percent reimbursement range. So so that reimbursement was maybe, or probably somewhat high relative to the cost of a similarly sized job. And that was, so that was reported by the contractor. So under the unit price program, we would measure that quantity and and issue reimbursement of twenty four hundred dollars because that was proportional to the amount of work done as opposed to what was just reported by the contractor. So in a lot of cases, it's up to the contractor to just, under the current program, to do the work and tell us how much it costs. And there's really nothing we can do to to challenge that. It's, so it it can be seen as easily taken advantage of because the contractor, you know, they can show up and say, it's a small pavement patch, but you'll get five thousand dollars for it in reimbursement. And then that money ultimately just goes to the contractor. And so they're taking advantage, they can take advantage of the program by just charging an excessive fee for that work.
So is it that the twenty-two, thirty-seven, fifty in the unit price reimbursement is for things that we don't reimburse for? Is that, is that why?
That savings would just be under the unit, the proposed program, we would have, we would have reimbursed that much less. The twenty-two, thirty-seven, fifty would be money that the city did not spend.
But the cost of the repair still would have cost the same.
It may have. And so that's where it's important too to point out that it's still gonna be up to contractors to charge what they want to charge. And and we've looked at pricing and to determine, you know, what an average cost would be. You could say what a fair cost for that work would be. And that's how much the city would be willing to reimburse. So doing that allows us to offset the scenarios where it may be taken advantage of and spend that money on scenarios where we're currently not paying enough back to the resident, or we're not providing enough aid to the resident to cost a larger, or to offset the cost of a larger repair.
So why wouldn't they just raise their prices again?
Well, they they could, but the, then the homeowners would end up paying more for that. So the unit price is set by the city, and that's something that we can be adjusted over time to account for inflation or if we see the rising cost of, you know, a certain type of pavement replacement. But that's ultimately something that the city would determine based on reported cost. So they, if they do start charging more, then ultimately, that cost gets pushed onto the the property owners.
Mr. Roberts.
All right. So if the city is setting up a unit price and it's got it figured out and it knows the materials involved and can come up with a unit price, the homeowner then should be aware of what the unit price is, the fair cost of of reconstruction of the, or of the 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 groundwork for the replacement of his lateral. But are we just talking about cement on city streets and sidewalk?
Yes. So this is only intended to cover the cost of pavement of that.
So I mean, I mean, I guess it would be up to the homeowner then to get bids from a couple of different contractors to find out if there was one who would actually stick to the replacement cost that was fair that the city chose as a reimbursement?
Yeah, I, it's always encouraged if time allows to.
Time allows.
To, yeah, for residents to.
Time is short, though, when your bathroom doesn't work.
That's, that's true. That's, that's true. And so that's, that's something that's somewhat out of the control of the city, though, is, um, the timing of that. So again, it's just, it, we're, you know, under the current program. You know, and if we left it as is, then we're reimbursing that $5,000.
So there should be a Facebook discussion about, uh, among homeowners about who's really getting a fair deal and who's not? Is that the only way that we can, uh, that this could be addressed?
I suppose, well, and, yeah, I mean, there's not, I'm not sure if there's, um, an easy way of comparing work done by contractors.
Sure, and different contractors have different qualities.
Right, and so-
Or abilities.
Right, and so, you know, looking at the, the information provided and going back and looking at the quantity of the work done, there are definitely, um, scenarios where people paid a lot of money-
Yeah.
Relative to someone down the street that may have paid a lot less for the same volume of work.
So, so this is still a real issue for the homeowner because they don't have, they may not have that information that, that, you know, company X could do a better job faster and cheaper than company Y, which they've now contracted with because that's the one they, somebody recommended them to?
Yes, so that's, yeah, and that currently there's, I'm, I'm sure there's some reviews that you can read, but, um, a lot of times it's going to be the first person to answer the phone and show up is going to get the, the job.
Of course, of course, it's a pressure to get things fixed. I, I just don't know how, how this can be, um, ameliorated in a way that will really benefit the, the homeowners. And, you know, if you don't have a lot of money in the bank, coming up with $5,000 to do a repair is a real problem. I mean, probably they'd like to, well, I mean, you're lucky to get a car for that much money. And now you're talking about something that, you know, is vital service to your home, of course. But you may not have that in the bank.
I think that that's true, and the same could be said for several aspects of the home. So, um, this just happens to be one where what we consider private infrastructure happens to coincide with city right-of-way in some cases.
I know, ropes can be the same issue.
Bill Brown was next.
Um, so I think the unit pricing is a big advantage, a big improvement over our current, um, our current way of reimbursement. And I like it being able to eliminate the maximum reimbursement. So if it does go clear across the street, um, everything is paid for as far as replacing the street goes. So that part I like. As far as the, um, so a couple of question, questions on the, um, when they first contact us and they say we have a sewer problem, do we have a list of contractors that we can give them?
No, typically the city, um, does not recommend contractors.
But we don't even have a list of people?
Well, we can, we do provide in some cases, um, we'll say, you know, these are contractors that have done this program, um, done work through this program.
Do they have to be licensed to?
For this type of work, they don't.
As long as they're five foot away from the foundation under current Illinois plumbing code, they don't have to be licensed.
Okay. And then for payment upfront, um, would it be possible to issue some kind of voucher? Like, once you go out and you estimate, you, you, you know by looking how much they have to remove, how much we're going to reimburse them, would it be possible to issue some kind of voucher that they could give the contractor and the contractor could bring into our finance department and get paid that way?
I think in that case, we run into the issue of directly paying contractors. And then we get into issues with paying prevailing wage or not paying prevailing wage. So, um, that's why the reimbursement program works so well is that, uh, or works well to keep those costs lower is that we're reimbursing the resident for work that's been done as opposed to paying a contractor directly. If we did meet on-site and agree to certain pavement removal, um, limits, we may be able to come to an agreement, but oftentimes we don't know anything until, uh, you know, most of the pavement's been removed and then they determine that we need to, they need to remove any more or even more. I suppose if, um, I'm not sure if there'd be a way to, to reimburse the, the property owner before the invoice has been paid. I think then we might run into issues.
If there was something, some way we could speed that up, maybe that process, so it wasn't two weeks, um, that would be, that would help, be helpful, but, or, or if we, the contractor would be willing to, you know, collect at a later date, give them 30 days to pay or something until they got the city reimbursement from the bill. So then finally, if, uh, if we do have extra money, like Aaron was talking about, we're, we're collecting more than we're spending on this program. And it seemed like one of the things that would be reasonable would be if it, if there was a city tree that could be blamed for the problem, perhaps we could reimburse additional money because of that. Is, is it possible to determine that when you're, when somebody is doing the repair?
Uh, our, I know our city arborist would tell you that the trees aren't the problem. Typically, it's the deficiency in the sewer pipes or cracks or breaks that allow those roots to intrude. Older sanitary sewers, and we deal with, with this a lot in our sewer mains where it's old clay pipe that doesn't have a gasket. So it's, it's pretty much just two pieces of pipe butted up together. Then the roots are, you know, easily find their way through into there. So we're doing a lot of root cutting and root treatment. Um, and we do a lot of sewer lining every year to eliminate those joints, um, and eliminate the root issues. So, uh, it's, I think that the most common cause of these sewer lateral problems are probably just age and, um, in some cases what people are flushing down, um, down the sewer.
Mr. Roberts?
And just before we move in there real quick, I, Elizabeth Hannon gave me some information. I, I misspoke earlier, um, you know, based on the $2 a year increase, we would have collected about $230,000, not $450,000. So, and we, we still have a surplus because we budget, you know, for a certain number of repairs a year. If we don't have that number of repairs, we don't utilize that money. That money goes back into the sanitary sewer budget. It's not going into, you know, other parts of the-
So it sounds like it's about $10,000 a year and it's going back into the-
Yeah, and that gets back to, if you remember, Justin earlier had a graphic that showed, you know, some years we have 11, some years we have three.
Yeah, I mean, that's just one or two repairs.
But we have to, we have to budget so much money per year to make sure that we have the funds available to pay out the sewer lateral.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Roberts?
So to try to address, um, one of the biggest issues for the, for the homeowner is, uh, how to come up with the money to make the repair in the first place and then wait three mon, three weeks for, uh, reimbursement. So, um, we have, in the past, had, uh, programs where we have, uh, emergency home repair money for low-income families, like if you had a roof problem or something like that. So why wouldn't we use some of the funds in the account for sewer repair to provide emergency loan, loan program on short-term loans to these people who are faced with a major, uh, cost of their home because of a, a lateral failure? And that would, uh, they could apply for that and perhaps, perhaps get emergency help right away. And then when they were reimbursed, they could repay the loan. I mean, is there a way of doing that process? It would still not be paying to the contractor. It would be paying to the homeowner to get through the one month, uh, where their finances have been thrown into the air and they need the repair right away. So is that a possibility?
I'd have to defer that probably to Elizabeth. That, that I think is more of a finance question.
Well, I'll admit I wasn't expecting that, that question. Um, I think-
I'm brainstorming, that's why.
I'm not going to say we couldn't do it, but I think establishing a loan program would be fairly complicated. We'd have to have a fairly detailed program that laid out the criteria for who would be eligible for loans. We're not at, we're not set up to handle loans. We're not a lender. So we might need to perhaps make an arrangement with a bank to actually handle the loan servicing.
Well, I, I disagree. I think we already have this program. There were, there were brochures, uh, I remember, um, several years ago, maybe 10 years ago, where, uh, there were, uh, loans provided to, for emergency repairs on houses, um, for low-income families. And I'm thinking that we, in the past, we've had these projects, these programs, probably before you've come to the city.
Yeah, we don't, we don't currently have a program like that. We don't currently have a system for handling that. I would be very surprised if we did that and didn't have, have somebody service the loan for us.
I think it was, it was a grant program. I, I don't think it was a loan.
It was a grant program.
It was a grant.
Grant, all right. So what's the difference between a loan and a grant?
Well, grant, you don't have to pay back.
You don't have to pay back. And where does the grant come from? Well, that we had, that we used for that.
Well, community development, it was one-
Community development, that's right.
They're the ones that ran the program. And I think it was, I don't know if the funding was through the block grant program or-
Right.
Josh and I are probably going to answer that.
Well, if we, if we, if, if there's a funds available for CDBG for use for infrastructure, wouldn't it be possible to, um, re-initiate that?
I can tell you through our CDBG program, there's an emergency grant. We still have an emergency grant program. I think the program you're talking about where we gave loans, it was, uh, called the deferred loan program. There many years ago, we did a loan, we bought down the interest rate through, um, a local lending institution where they actually did the loan and we paid the entry, you know, we bought down like what Brad was talking about earlier. But for the home funds, um, um, the home has to be brought up to current code standards. The emergency grant program has a cap of $5,000. So even if the, even if the emergency grant was used in concert with this, that money would top out at 5,000. So I'm not sure how that could work out. I could, you know, talk to Randy to see how that might be able to work. I know that Randy has worked with this program before, but typically our, our cap, I think, was a little bit lower.
So CDBG funds were once used, right? And they're still available, right?
I think that they have been used from time to time with this program. Am I right about that, Brad? But there's a cap on that that doesn't necessarily meet-
On qualification, too.
Right, they, they have to, there's the federal income guidelines they'd have to meet.
Well, we can deal with that. I mean, you know, if, uh, if the person's having a problem because they have low income, I mean, that, they would, they potentially could qualify for that help.
Correct.
So we had to explore that to see if that could actually be used somehow in addressing one of the questions that the, um, the neighborhood has brought up.
Well, I, I think the emergency grant is, is, um, the city basically hires the contractor to do the work. Has to be within the federal guidelines. I mean, there's federal, federal program regulations that go, that kind of have to be, um, considered in this process. But I think that, uh, one of the things that I recall, sometimes when people have received assistance, there's a maximum per year amount of assistance. And sometimes people have received assistance and then had problems with their sewer. And then this program was tapped out, you know, they'd reached the maximum on the emergency grant program. And I think I was talking, you know, briefly talking with Elizabeth that, uh, thinking, uh, maybe one of the local lenders would be willing, we might have to pay a service fee for a loan program through the local lender where the lender would, uh, loan the money and then we would reimburse the lender. And lender would manage the process like a title process on a home where they would pay out the contractor on behalf of the owner. And then the city would reimburse the owner and lender at the same time. That's a possibility.
Well, we have friendly banks in town. We should maybe pursue that.
I just want to remind the council that we have two people that still need to speak. Ms. Google, ahead.
Well, some of my questions have already been answered, um, so I'll try and be very brief here. So, one of the things that I was thinking about, and I've had both my lateral fixed, um, I had clay pipes. I had to dig up and, and replace it. I also, two days ago, had to clean out the sewer line. So, so my two comments with that are, first, um, one of the biggest costs for us to replace that lateral line was hiring, we had to bring in some heavy equipment. And that heavy equipment was very expensive. So my question to you is, and I, and I think that we're making a lot of progress in terms of doing unit price. What I'm wondering about, especially with this particular slide, is the very first couple of feet, whatever we're, however we're going to measure that, probably have a higher cost than the remainder because you have to bring in that equipment. So maybe one of the modifications that we could look at is having a higher unit price for the first couple of feet and then a more standard. I don't know how difficult that is, but that could account for why you see this difference here. Um, so that was-
Yeah, I think that, and we tried to account for that somewhat in our, our unit prices, is that, um, you know, as I mentioned, we, it's not just the cost of that material, but, um, you're right in that there is often a mobilization fee. And, uh, and so that is something we could consider, um, kind of a, maybe a base reimbursement, um, for that. The City of Champaign has a similar concept for, um, for their program. And I believe that they have flat-rate reimbursement for traffic control or things like traffic control and, um, and I'm, I'm not sure if mobilization is one of those. Actually, I think I have it here. So that's something that we considered. But again, that can be something where we end up paying for, for something that maybe isn't used as, as it should be or, um, you know, are, are we going to pay $500 for them to put up a barricade on a sidewalk and, and leave it there for two days? But, uh, it's something that we could look into. It's, that was one of those things. It's hard to, to compare and quantify, um, the cost for the different sizes of, um, you know, the different ranges of traffic control or, or mobilization. I think that, uh, you know, the size of the equipment can also differ. So, uh, there are a lot of different aspects of that cost, uh, that can be considered.
Right, right. That makes sense. Um, I, I do think it would be interesting to explore that, as you said, mobilization fee. It's very expensive to bring in some of the heavier equipment, a lot cheaper to bring in some of the smaller equipment. My other question is, is it, and, and maybe this is a question for the lawyer and for Jim. I don't know, I realize that we cannot recommend contractors, but I'm wondering if we can reach out to contractors and say, this is our unit price. Will you accept this as full payment and then advertise the people who agree to charge that?
I didn't get the whole question because I was, uh, conferring with Bill Gray.
Sorry.
What you're wondering is, can we set unit prices and then ask contractors if they will agree to that?
Kind of. It's, it's just a little wrinkle on that. So if, as we set the unit price, if we do that, um, can we reach out to contractors who do this work and say, this is the city's unit price. Will you charge this in the City of Urbana? And we will list that as one of the contractors on our website.
Well, we get in, you know, there are a couple of issues. We get into endorsing contractors. I'm not saying it's illegal or not. I'd have to do the research on that. Some of that's a policy question. The other thing is, it's my understanding when we talk about some kind of a relationship we're going to have with the contractor, asking them if they agree to that price, we then get into, uh, prevailing wage issues. There are all kinds of issues where, you know, municipalities have tried to get around the prevailing wage act and they've been nailed for doing it. So if we enter into more or less agreements or endorsements of contractors, we know who will accept a unit price, which is not based on prevailing wage, we could be charged with a prevailing wage violation. I'm not saying we will.
Uh, another way to look at it is, is you can just simply ask contractors to volunteer how much they charge and they can say it's by estimate. That would be one way. So we're not saying, are you going to accept this? Rather, we're just giving them the opportunity as being listed as a contractor. If they want to be listed on the website, we're not endorsing them. These are just, I mean, I would assume they'd want the advertising for free. But it would just be one way perhaps to-
Again, I'm not sure we'd get into endorsement. Uh, one way of possibly handling it would be for this program, publishing the unit rates. So, you know, the, the unit pricing. So homeowners and contractors can be aware of that. We don't endorse anybody. We don't pay contractors. We don't communicate or have these tacit agreements or approvals because now you do begin to broach into the, and invade into the prevailing wage issues. But you let it be known. This, this is what we think, you know, based on our research, based in our history. Uh, it's, it becomes a homeowner education issue as well as a contractor issue. So the contractors will know when they come out. Hopefully, the homeowner will be armed with this information. The other approach could be, is if the homeowner contacts the city, and I would hope they would, especially if they're contemplating some kind of a reimbursement, uh, that we're able to provide that information. So when a contractor comes out, they can say, this is what the prevailing, uh, uh, the reimburse- well, reimbursement or the, the unit rate is. And, you know, this is what, uh, at least the city believes this work for this aspect of it is worth without us. And they hire the contractor like they do and they pay the contractor like they do. And we don't get into that. We've just set unit prices, period.
There's one final question. There's one final question that I have and I must turn it over. So my final one is, there's nothing preventing us from combining the, some of your ideas that you presented here, the first one being unit price and the second one, working with a bank to help out with loans. So there's nothing preventing us from doing that, which would hopefully address most of what the neighborhood's concerns are. Just proposing that, okay.
Mr. Jacobson, go ahead.
So it seems to me that, I mean, every financial transaction that the city engages in becomes transparent and should be accessible to the public. So...
Presumably so, yes.
So that would include the reimbursements that we pay and the documentation on which we do that. So what we can do is make available to people who are facing this situation, the information about the transactions that we have reimbursed. That would include the price that was charged and what we reimbursed. And then the homeowners, I think that's really useful information to the homeowners and we can definitely make that available to everybody facing this.
Yeah, whatever we reimburse, it would be foible anyway, so it can be posted on the website. Conceptually, I have no legal problem with that. The only concern I have is will the, depending, based on what has been done. You would need a description, a detailed description of the work done. And I believe that Brad et al. indicated that they just get an invoice for total job and they have to kind of parse out, in effect, some kind of a unit or at least break out the reimbursable part. But if you have a unit price, then that becomes kind of a metric and a guideline that's uniform across all these kinds of projects. And the contractor says, well, you're going to, I'm going to have to do X, Y, Z. And the homeowner hopefully will say, I understand that. Here's what I understand the unit price of this should be. And if they don't agree to it, obviously, there's a time factor. And I realize that's a problem getting the work done quickly because these are people's homes that are having sewer backups. But that's not to say they can't ask two contractors or three contractors to come out with a bid and they say, this, this is what, for this part of the work, this is the unit price. But conceptually, what you're saying, I have no problem with what you're saying.
Okay, as much as I'm enjoying this, we do have to manage our time. Mr. Ammons has something to say and then I'm hoping we can move on to the two people that want to speak.
So I was just thinking about that, when I looked at the slides earlier and there was a difference in the reimbursement and the actual cost, right? The difference, just to be clear, is what?
In the, this example?
It was like, I don't know.
Was it one of the tables?
Back, one of the tables that we have here, yeah, you'll see, yeah, average pavement replacement and average reimbursement. Why is that so different? I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear. Is that pavement, because all we're, we're reimbursing for is the pavement cost and the rest of the digging and all that stuff is, falls on the, the homeowner, right?
Right, and this table is not actually showing, this table is just referencing those pavement replacement costs. So the rest is left out of it because really the city's not interested, not that we're not interested, we're not going to be responsible for the cost of the pipe. So the, the cost of the, of the work outside of pavement replacement. Really, all we're interested in, or all we're going to reimburse for is the cost of the backfill and the, you know, the concrete and the labor associated with reporing that pavement back and, and doing it to city standards. If the, you know...
And is that also, is that the backfill from the homeowner's yard all the way to the street or just the right of way?
Just under the pavement. Typically, if sewer lateral was repaired in the front yard or in cases where it goes behind the house through the backyard to a backyard sewer main, the, the backfill in that case would just be the dirt that was removed to get to the pipe. We don't allow, you know, soil to be put back under streets. We require certain grades of aggregate or just specific backfill depending on the classification of the street. So in those cases, you know, we require a certain standard of backfill as well as the pavement replacement and thickness standards. So that's where that excess cost is associated with this work.
Okay.
Okay, great. I believe the Underwoods wish to approach, would you mind coming up as a couple? Is that okay? Just so we can manage time or do you want to come up separately? Because I have a card for each of you. How would you like to approach, single or as a couple? Or is that not the couple? I have Evelyn. I'm sorry, I thought, I'm sorry, I'm, okay. Forget what I said there. I don't want to create any couples. So Bishop, King James Underwood, if... Okay. They are a couple. Okay. Did you want to come up together or?
Good evening.
Hello to the council and to the mayor. I would like to say this, that everything is passed on to the homeowner and you don't realize that it's putting a burden on the homeowner. And eventually, the person on the south side of the street is going to have to sell their property because they can't maintain it because of all these high bills that they have to pay. And when you talk about that pipe, most subdivisions, when they are, when they are done, the streets are put in and when they start building the houses, there is a pipe from across the street to the, about a foot from the sidewalk where the homeowner hooks up from the house to that pipe. And they said, we own the whole pipe. That pipe was already there. We are connected to the pipe and they are giving us responsibility that, that we really don't, don't, don't have. And, and it's putting an extra, and, and you're talking about we pay upfront. Have you ever thought, if you can't pay it, can we pay it? And you're getting money from us to, to maintain those things. So I'm saying that you're passing it to the homeowner and you're saying the homeowner is responsible. Where is the homeowner going to get all that money from? If you get a loan, the homeowner now, they have to, have to pay extra because they got to pay interest on that loan. So you just put an extra burden on the homeowner. So the homeowners, they buy something in good faith, thinking they, they have something going to work. And when these kind of problems happen and they haven't, haven't planned for it and don't have the money to pay for it, then the city say, it's your responsibility, you get a loan. You may not be able to get a loan. Now what do you do? What, what is being proposed is problematic. The city should pay upfront. Then we won't have to be stuck with a, with a, with a bill paying interest. Because eventually, you keep paying bills like that, you're going to go bankrupt. And they haven't thought of that. You got somebody paying taxes and they, as taxpayers and they're trying to do what they can to maintain and all these burdens are passed on to the homeowner. It's the homeowner's responsibility. And I don't think it's fair. Especially when the main is put on the other side of the street and the people on the south side of the street have to go across the street and hook up to the main and you're saying, we're responsible for, for that, that, that area that you made, putting a pipe on the other side of the street rather than in the center of the street where it can be accessed and they wouldn't have to tear up the street. Because they could, they could go, go under, under the street and hook up to the main and they won't have to go, tear up the street. What is happening is you make a mistake and we have to pay for it. That, that is not fair to me. And I, I'm just saying, it's not fair and, and, and a lot of people lose their homes because they can't maintain because all these kind of things happen. They don't realize all these things are going to happen like paying for that lateral. That pipe was already there because I know some of the subdivision, because I worked in some of the subdivision. I know that pipe was already there and when we built the house, that we didn't tear up the street. All we did was went to the edge of the sidewalk at a certain area and dug down and hooked up to that pipe that was already there from the house to the edge of the sidewalk. It's approximately about two feet on the other side of the sidewalk into, to the property. So now we're getting all this stuff that, that is the homeowner's responsibility. Why are we paying taxes? I pay as much tax as the person on the other side of the street, but yet and still, they get a better, better deal than I get. I'm not saying pass the burden on to them. I'm just saying you made a mistake, you ought to take care of your error or your mistake rather than to make ordinances protecting you. The ordinance need to be changed, that the homeowner is responsible for the hookup from the house to the edge of the sidewalk. That's what the ordinance should read rather than from the house to the T. The T could be in ten bucks, too. The homeowner is responsible. I don't think it's fair. I thank you for your time.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So Bishop, I'm looking at the diagram. It's a rough, it's just a diagram of, and I don't know, can you see that? Okay.
Yes.
The bottom line for you all is that you want to pay for whatever comes up to the end of your property.
Yes.
Right? And anything in that public right of way underneath there should be the responsibility of the city.
Yes.
And you have worked on these type of projects before and you are aware, because you've looked at this and seen that this, this problem is something that, is a problem all over this city.
Yes, another thing I would like to say is that they're saying that we have to put out, in a clean out, it should be a city ordinance when these people put in these lines, that they should have an automatic clean out. It's a lot of houses up in Dr. Ellis do not have a clean out and those that have clean outs, the homeowner had to put them in.
So the clean out that, because one of the things that Brad talked about was that if, if the city was going to say, and one of the things I have to say is that we keep having these conversations saying the city and the homeowner is something different. Actually, it's the same thing because whatever cost we put, taxpayer is going to have to pay it, whether it's extra $2, extra $8, whatever. Now, it gets spread out more, but at the end of the day, that's what's going to end up happening in order to pay for this particular problem. So it's not a us versus them type of thing. All of us are going to be in this one way or another together. Because if it's going to get paid for by the city, the city is going to have to raise some sort of fee or tax or whatever to pay it, right? Which all of y'all are going to have to pay and everybody in here is going to have to pay that lives in the city of Urbana. So the, but I do understand the immediacy and the emergency and the burden, the hardship that's put on a family at once to say, hey, you got to come up with $5,000, you know, right now and pay for this upfront and then wait for three weeks. And I would rather see that spread out than put, dumped on one, on one particular family. So I'm just trying to see this clean out thing though, that the city, that we're talking about from what Brad was saying, would be at the property line so that they could go down and clean out straight down and into the area that the city owns, right? That would be a cost that would have to be, and I don't know if Brad actually spoke to what that would be, to require any home that has this type of setup to install a clean out at the property line. That's going to be the responsibility of the homeowner or would that be the responsibility of the city? I'm not sure about that. I'm trying to get an understanding of that when it, when he described, bringing it up to that property line.
When the sewer lines was put in, if the city had an ordinance, they would have had to put a clean out there.
When the, when the, when the house was built, you're saying?
Yes. I mean, when the, when the underground structure is put in, they have to have that already set up. And all they have to do, when the homeowner hooks up, they hook up to the, to, to, to the part where the, the clean out is, hook up to the clean out, but that wasn't done.
I, I can answer it real quick. First of all, the question is, I'm sorry. I, I can answer your question real quick. The, the first question of whether the homeowner would have to pay for it or whether that's something the city, you, you could do it either way. In fact, if you remember from the communities we surveyed, I think it was Carbondale required the, the resident to pay that cost and install that clean out, whereas Schaumburg, the city took care of it. And you're right, I mean, whether the city pays for it or the, the property owner pays for it, someone's paying for it. It all comes out of the, the, the fees are out of the, the property owner's fund. So speaking back, the question about the lateral under the street, you have to understand the way typically, typically the city does infrastructure improvements is when a subdivision is developed, they come in and they put in the, all the infrastructure. The city doesn't pay for any of that cost. That's all on the development cost or developer, that all ends up in the cost of light of the lot. They typically extend the sewer laterals to the back of the sidewalk at the time of construction. And it doesn't mean that the city owns that, but they do that so they don't have to have each homeowner come in and recut the brand new street to put that lateral in. So, you know, that lateral is always intended to be privately owned, but they extend it to the back of the sidewalk, you know, so they don't have to tear up that new street that they just put in. So that, that's why they, they do it. It's, it's not that, you know, the, the city intended to own that. It's just, it makes sense not to tear that new pavement up. So they extend the laterals typically to the back of sidewalks.
Thank you, Bishop, appreciate it.
Okay, we are getting real short on time, so. I'm sorry, what? Okay. Right. Mr. Jacobson.
Just a point of information. Can, does the staff need any action by us to introduce the unit pricing or can that? You will, okay, so at some later time, this will come as an action item. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Underwood.
Thank you.
All right, in all fairness, Ellen, or Evelyn, excuse me, did also file a card. Did you want to speak separately or? I have two cards. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think I said I want to ask some questions. Yeah, Evelyn, Burnett Underwood, Reverend Doctor. I just wanted to say, Mr. Ammons had asked, and I don't think Bishop made it clear that, that pink cheek, I mean, that pink, going back to that, you showed a pink, I don't know, rollout, that pink rollout, the pink rollout that you showed, the pink rollout. I think it went to the middle of the street and there was a typical, I think you talked something about, it was typical.
I think it was number five.
But with us, with us, and I think Bishop was getting to that. It goes not to the middle of the street, it goes all the way on the other side into our neighbor's across the street yard. That's where the T is, Bishop. Between the house and the sidewalk, is that correct? So that's, yeah, and I think this was typical. But you got to go all the way across the street in our neighborhood to the other person's yard between the house and the sidewalk. And you got to tear up their flower bed and everything and that's payment. You're not going to reimburse for that. But that's what we got to do.
Yes, we are.
Is that right?
No, no, the unit price will now reimburse, if we adopt that, the unit price will reimburse all the way across.
But that's going to be a lot of money, you know, all the way across the... Oh, you have to tear up the street. You got to tear up the street, all the way across the street.
And under the unit price, under the unit pricing, it will be reimbursed.
All the way across the street, the person's yard. But I'm just saying, this is the typical, but, but we're talking about all the way across the street and then the next person's yard on their private property is where the lateral is, on the private property of our neighbor. And a lot of people don't like that on their private property. And how can we, got to get permission to go on their private property because the city lateral is on their private property. lateral is on their private property. So I just wanted to get that clear. Okay. Number, my one question, who is being reimbursed and what areas of town? Because a lot of our people have not been reimbursed since we've been coming here since 2013, 2008 or whatever. And, and we had asked, I think it's 2014, 2013 when we presented that list to the city, was asking, they said, well, they couldn't give us that information. But we have the information here, but I guess we could forward you the information, I guess, to get the names of the areas of the city of the people who've been reimbursed, because our people hadn't been reimbursed at Dr. Ellis subdivision. I'm not asking for an answer right now. Okay. And I guess it's the pink carpet, I thought it was a pink carpet in the middle of the street and then I went and talked more about what happened there. Now, the five questions, the five places where you surveyed, I don't have the five minutes, I don't think so, I got to hurry up. The five places that you surveyed, I think that was in 2013 to 2014, Mr. Bennett talked about that. And why did you do that? Why did you do that? Because at that time, I need to know why did you do that and where can I find that information? Because that's critical information because number four and five was, that was a critical information that I want to find out more about. So could I talk to you about that later and?
Absolutely. We did that survey at the request of council back in 2013.
Yeah, that's right. I know we were, yeah.
Yeah, and I'd be glad to email the results to you.
Okay, I'll talk to you about that. And, and I'm not going to take any more time if I could get that information for you because I think it was critical information. And there was one other thing else, it's called, I was going to ask, I have medication, so I can't remember. What was it? Because I got a little more time. What was it? I have another question. Will that allow a different type of construction, this new plan would allow a different type of construction like Mr. Joe Lewis, remember when he did a different way, the pipe bursting rather than, would that allow a different type of, this new plan?
No, the, the way it's currently set up and the way it's proposed, it's just if you remove the pavement, so if you use a trenchless technology like pipe bursting or sewer lining, you would not be eligible for reimbursement under the current program and the proposed changes.
I have one question.
Okay, Mr. Ammons.
Dr. Underwood, are you saying that there are people in Dr. Ellis subdivision who applied and were not reimbursed?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, Mayor Marlin.
Applied for pavement?
Yes, on the, yes.
I, I could tell you from city staff, we've approved every application we've ever received. So the maps that are in your council packet, I mean, that, those are all the ones that we've received applications for and paid. I mean, I don't think we've ever denied anybody's pavement reimbursement application. It's not income based.
Okay, do we have a, we're really.
Thank you.
Thank you, way over our time limits. Do we have a recommendation for this or do we want to move it for further discussion?
But you know what, sir? We may wait an awful long time to get here and y'all knew that we were going to be on the agenda, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
I'd move to direct staff to bring ordinance to council with the unit replacement costs rather than the cap, rather than the current program. And at the same time, ask finance staff to look into some kind of short term loan option for residents that would be interested in participating in that.
My thoughts exactly.
Okay, Mr. Ammons.
I want, let it get second or whatever, because I had, I still have one more thing I need to get clarified.
Okay, I'm seconding Bill's motion, yeah.
Okay, so moved by Bill, seconded by Mr. Jacobson.
So just to be clear, for pavement reimbursement, there's the program that we're talking about, even at the, the rate of, the unit rates, any individual who is in this situation such as Dr. Ellis subdivision, the homeowner is absolved of all pavement replacement costs. The only cost of the homeowner is their, basically their private property, dig up, backfield and stuff. Is that what we're saying?
The answer would be no. They're still responsible for the pipe replacement cost.
So the pipe replacement cost, let's just say it was $100 for the pavement and the backfield and the, the pipe replacement. How much of that $100 is the pipe replacement on a scale such as I just described?
I mean, it really, it varies from situation to situation, but you know.
We're talking about PVC pipe, right?
Yeah, typically the, the pipe, you know, repair costs, Justin said, based on data we've had, is typically 10 to 20% of the total cost of the repair with the remainder of it being the pavement removal and replacement.
So when you all did all these averages and you, you spoke about 6,000 or however many miles of this stuff that's all over the city, you can also give us a, an estimate, an average cost of each one of these laterals that have been replaced. And the reimbursement program, you, you can give us a little bit of that information on what the homeowner is going to have to pay on average for the pipe. But the bulk of the, the, this, this unit priced, unit based reimbursement is going to cover basically 80 to 90% of that pay, of that cost, but it's going to cover all of the pavement and backfield that's on the city property. That is what I'm understanding. Is that correct?
No, I don't, I don't think that is correct. I think both with the current program and the unit price program, there's the possibility that the property owner could be responsible for a portion of the pavement removal and replacement costs. If it's contractor charges them at a higher rate than what the unit price is, that difference, you know, ends up being borne by the, the property owner.
Mary Alice Wu.
I would like to add to the direction of the staff, if Bill is amenable to it, to look at the mobilization fee that you guys had talked about so that the unit price would be slightly higher for the first X number of feet and then kind of taper out so that we can maybe buffer some of those issues. So I don't want us to create a situation in which one type of person really benefits because they get 11,000 instead of 5,100. Another person is severely hampered because instead of getting 4,200, they get 2,400. So anything that we can do to mitigate that situation, I, I would like to see in anything that we decide on.
Okay, so do we need a vote on the motions? Okay.
Well, just so I can say for the record that if this program and all of this time and energy that we're spending on this and we see that this is a unfair and undue burden to property owners, that they have to pay for and dig up city property and we're coming up with a program that doesn't quite cover the entire cost, I agree with the folks in Dr. Ellis subdivision. It is not 100% reimbursable expense. I don't agree with that. So I would be a no vote.
Mr. Clerk.
Just to give you some clarification, Councilmember Wu has suggested a friendly amendment. The mover and seconder need to indicate acceptance or you need to do a vote or do a full blown amendment to the motion.
Okay, so Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I'm okay with some kind of mobilization fee. I guess, I mean, it sounded like the, the unit cost had extra built into it to kind of help cover that. So you may have to adjust some of the unit costs down in order to include a mobilization fee, but I think if you came up with something, I mean, you've already matched up the costs to what we were spending before, so maybe if, if that's what you have to. But yeah, I'd be in favor of looking at a mobilization fee as well.
Friendly amendment.
Okay. Accepted, so. All, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Ammons is opposed for the record.
May I?
Okay, may we move along here to our resolutions. Resolution number 2017-11-072R, a resolution estimating the tax levy fiscal year 2017-2018, City Finance.
I've got a really nice slideshow here, but I'm going to skip over some of these slides due to the lateness of the hour.
Excuse me one second. How long will your presentation take?
I think I can do this in five minutes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Move for more time? No, I'm just kidding.
So we're talking tonight about the city's estimated property tax levy. And just as a reminder, if you, if you look at total property taxes, and this is from the 2016 tax levy, which is the most recent information we have, the city's piece of the property tax bill in the city is just 13% of the total. And you can see here in the pie chart all the other pieces that make up that bill. More than half is schools. We've got parks, the county, Parkland College and some other smaller taxing districts. So at the recommended tax rate of $1.355, which is the same as our current tax rate, I've provided a chart that shows you how much some homeowners in an owner occupied home would actually pay in city property taxes. So on a $100,000 home, the city taxes would be $370. On a $150,000 home, $596. There's a couple other values on there, but I think that gives you an idea. The median home price in Urbana is somewhere right in the middle there. I think it's about 120 something thousand. So the city levies taxes for four purposes. We levy taxes for police pensions, for firefighter pensions, for library operations and for corporate purposes, which really means that's the part that goes to the general fund to pay for services like police protection. So again, our goal is to maintain a stable tax rate. To do that, we adjust the amount of the levy based on the assessed value. For 2017, my estimate is that our assessed value will increase by only about 1.8%, which is a little disappointing, but I think that's our reality. So there's a quick chart to show you where our assessed value has been over time. You can see here, we reached our peak in 2010. Then we started to see the effects of the recession and then the big drop off with, with the hospital, hospitals going off the tax rolls. And then we've been slowly creeping back up, but even now in 2017, we're not nearly at the level that we were back in 2010. So at that tax rate, that's just, that just means that we are able to receive less revenue. So going to the specific purposes, for the library, the library is very dependent on property tax revenue. That's the vast majority of their revenue. The proposed levy is $3,210,000. That's based on the budget that was reviewed by the city council and approved by the library board. That's just the amount that's necessary to sustain their current budget. That's a 3.2% per six, two, three, blah, 3.26% increase from the current tax levy. For police and firefighter pensions, the recommended total amount of the levies is $2,176,000. That amount is based on the minimum required by state law. That is a 10.2% increase from the current levy. And as we discussed in the budget process, we're continuing to develop pension funding options for council review and come up with a strategy to begin to close that funding gap. For this year, because of all the uncertainty about our financial situation, we haven't updated our financial forecast. There's a lot of moves at the state level that could potentially affect our revenues. We will try to allocate additional funding during the budget process, but that may be difficult. If we were to, to fully fund the pensions based on the goal of 100% funded by 2033, which was the previous funding level, that would require an additional $2.2 million in this tax levy, which would basically eliminate the amount available for corporate purposes. So the corporate levy is the amount that's remaining basically at that tax rate after we provide for all of those other needs. So that, that portion would actually decrease by 7.25% to about 2.1 million. That decreases 168,000 in round numbers and that most likely is going to result, result in budget reductions. So here's just city tax levy over time. You can see the portion in the bottom in blue is the library. It's been relatively stable, increasing slowly. The portion in purple is pensions and the portion in green is the corporate portion. So you can see back here when we were funding our pensions at a higher level, the corporate levy was much smaller. And then as we decreased the funding for pensions, we, we were able to allocate more revenue to corporate purposes. But now we've reached that point where because we've been funding at the minimum for a couple years, that's starting to grow and again, the corporate levy is shrinking. So that's just kind of a big picture of where we've been over time. So really quickly, to complete the tax levy process, we'll ask you to adopt the estimated levy next week. We won't be required to advertise and hold a public hearing because the increase will be less than 5%. The final tax levy will go to committee on December 11th and to council on December 18th. And there will actually be a package of three council bills. There'll be the tax levy, there'll be an abatement for the bonds and there'll be an abatement to make sure that we come out at the tax rate that we're targeting here. And that's it.
Do we have any questions? Bill, Brown.
So I know some taxing districts are over levying, expecting, or on the off chance that there's a decision in a Supreme Court case and the Carl or other hospital properties come back on the rolls. Is that something you're not recommending or do we have more visibility on that now?
We, we did exactly that last year. We, we used that strategy last year. The mayor and I talked that over this year and we just didn't see any chance, given that we're back in the circuit court and whatever decision is made would certainly be appealed. We just didn't really see that being a factor for this tax levy.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Jacobson.
Just one more comment. I like the idea of, of a possible one-time contribution to the pension funds if the money comes up. Although it'll be a hard decision whether to do, toward the pension funds or to Florida Avenue.
Yeah, we have a lot of needs. It will be a hard decision.
Just so I'm sure I understand the, the cycles, we're talking about revenue that will be reflected in the 2019 fiscal, FY 2019 budget, but not the budget year that we're currently in. Is that correct?
Actually, so property taxes really work on a calendar year cycle. So about half of this property tax levy will be received in the spring before June 30th, so in the current fiscal year, and about half of it in the next fiscal year.
But there are no implications that are going to require any budget adjustments as, as if, if things go as you're, you know, you're suggesting now.
Well, yes, I think there are because what I'm telling you is that the corporate levy will decrease by $168,000, which is a direct hit on the general fund. At the same time, we know we've already lost 2% of our home roll sales tax to the state collection fee and the discussion about property tax caps is still very much alive in the state legislature. There was a bill that was actually passed by the House last week in the veto session and there was no action in the Senate, but it was, it was very close.
So, so we might, oh, but, I should know all of this now, but if there is a budget adjustment in the current fiscal year, it'll be down rather than up. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Jared Miller.
I'd like to make a motion to extend time. This, we're technically out of time.
I'll second.
Till 11 o'clock.
Okay, we've extended our time till 11 o'clock.
You have to vote.
If we vote. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mary Alice is opposed?
No.
No?
I have, I just want to be called on.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to make a motion that we move resolution number 2017-11-072R with a recommendation to approval to council.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Mary Allison, seconded by Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, that moves. Ordinance Number 2017-11-066, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing number of Class C liquor licenses for Go Brands Incorporated, doing business as Go Puff, 1908 North Linview Avenue, Unit 1W, Urbana, Illinois 61801. Mayor.
Yes, this would increase the number of Class C licenses, which is packaged liquor license for off-premise consumption, and as was pointed out earlier, the ordinance establishing this operation was considered and passed by the council a few weeks ago.
Yes.
I believe there was a question, I can't remember whether it was during the meeting last week or on a sidebar. The question was whether this organization will have a actual in-place retail walk-in operation, and I've conferred with their council, and they will not. It'll be strictly a delivery operation, ordering, whether it be on phone or online, and delivery.
Mr. Miller.
Chief Morgan, I know we talked about this when we were talking about the liquor ordinance, but could you remind us just once more what the enforcement problems and/or solutions are with underage sales?
Yeah, just like with, just like with any other, when we do checks for any other establishment that sells alcohol, we hire underage people to go in and try to purchase either alcohol or tobacco, and that's, that's our mechanism for, I guess, testing, for lack of a better word, the, these establishments and employees to make sure that they are checking for somebody's ID. So, we could do the same thing with this particular company, and whether, you know, we have a hotel room, or we, we use an apartment, sometimes we'll have, you know, apartment complexes, let us use an apartment for something, we could use it for that, that type of thing, that's how we would, how we would do that.
Bill Brown.
So, in this, in this case, you'd, you'd have someone who was 21 call in the order, pay for it with their credit card, and then when they came to, to deliver it, you'd have an underage person try to accept it, maybe with the, with the idea, with the ID of the older person, and see if the delivery driver catches that.
Yeah, we could, we could try different mechanisms for, for testing it, but, you know, there's nothing, right now, trying to catch someone that is of age going in someplace and legally purchasing alcohol, and then going out and giving it to someone else, I mean, that's a different problem. That's not necessarily on the business that sold the alcohol, that's on the person, you know, the person that, that bought it. And so, that's a different kind of, there's a different way of trying to deal with those types of things.
Mr. Miller has an issue here.
Yeah, so outside of enforcement, I'm not allowed to comment on this, and according to the State Liquor Control Act, I have to recuse myself.
Okay, I guess, yeah, that's all I could think of right now.
Mary Alice Wu.
So, I'm not sure if the lawyers are here, I have a question for you, if that's okay. If I remember correctly, the, when the person purchases a, the, sorry, when the person goes on the website and requests to purchase liquor, there is some kind of database that that ID is run through, is that correct?
Not exactly. For the record, my name is Harlan Powell, I'm the attorney for Go Brands. My understanding of the system is that any potential user has to provide personal information about themselves. It's a self-verification, name, address, credit card information, they have to affirmatively attest to the fact that they are over 21 years of age. They then have to present their ID at the time of actual delivery, and the, the drivers themselves, who are independent contractors working with Go Brands, they will verify the information that the purchaser has provided to the company on the mobile app, and they'll compare that with the ID that's presented to them to verify that they are one and the same person.
Do you have any technology to ascertain if that ID is real or fake?
In, in terms of handheld scanners or things of that nature?
Yeah, maybe.
There are products out there commercially available, they vary both in terms of cost and quality. I do not know whether or not in this market or any other, whether or not Go Brands makes use of those. I can, I can inquire and, and respond within the next 24, 48 hours, I just don't have that information with me.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Jacobson.
Yeah, I, I'm mindful of the issues that Ms. Stuckey raised. I haven't been able to find any evidence that, in point of fact, delivery, alcohol delivery services raise the incidence of abuse of alcohol, although I certainly am open to that possibility. But, in the absence of any real evidence to that effect, I, I will, I will move passage of, I will move recommendation of this ordinance to full council.
Okay, moved by Eric Jacobson, does we have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
And seconded by Bill Brown. All in favor?
No, we're still discussing time.
Oh, more discussion? I'm melting down. Wow, look at this. I'll just go in order here. Dennis Roberts.
I'm not going to support this. I think that this, if this was a drive-in, or if this was a store that people would walk up to and actually purchase liquor, that would make a lot of sense to me. If it's going to be totally just a delivery service between midnight and 4:30 a.m., I'm not, I'm, I'm not interested in it. I don't think it serves the public in the right way. I'd be happy if they made that into a real store and, you know, made it a place where people could drive up to get their liquor, or chips, or whatever it's going to be. They could, I mean, I don't mind them delivering pretty much anything else but the alcohol. If they want to deliver chips, fine, that's, that's fine with me, but I, I kind of agree with Lim Stuckey.
If, if I may respond, my understanding of, of both the ordinance and the application that is currently under consideration is that the licensee here would be subject to the hour restrictions of every other licensed business in this, in the city of Urbana. So, there would not be deliveries of products at 3:30, 4:30 in the morning, it would be...
So, was the, was the article in the News Gazette wrong?
I'm sorry, I did not read the article, I wasn't...
Liquor, yeah, it was liquor, yeah.
But I can tell you the law, as I understand it.
This is a liquor ordinance.
Mr. Brown.
They're already delivering chips and other things, and they're, from my understanding, they're delivering till 4:00, 4:30 in the morning, is that right?
In terms of alcoholic beverages, that would not be true.
No, I'm chip, I'm talking about potato chips.
Oh, I don't believe there's a law against delivering potato chips at 4:00 in the morning.
So, they're already delivering, they just, he's saying that they won't deliver alcohol later than our rules allow.
That's correct.
Okay, and they're delivering tobacco products now, and so for tobacco, the age is 18, is that right? Or is it 21? I don't know.
I believe 18.
18. So, do they do the same thing with that? They require payment upfront and, and ID when they get there?
They have age verification requirements there as well, yes.
Okay. I, I looked at the app, and I, I put a tobacco product in my basket, but I didn't get any warning or anything, that's, I suppose when I check out, I would have to do something special, but it would, I think it would help in the app to provide warning upfront for tobacco and alcohol, that you'll need to pay for it upfront, and you'll be expected to, you know, and about the restocking fee, if that's still true, they said there was a restocking fee. I think having all that upfront would help dissuade people from trying to get away with stuff. So, that's, that's just a general comment. The, the other thing that we talked about when we talked about the ordinance was the advantage of someone who might attempt to drive to a liquor store after they've had a few drinks when they really shouldn't be driving. If they were to do that anyway, hopefully they could be persuaded to order it instead and prevent some kind of drunk driving accident. And it seemed like there was another, I guess, and for people who are disabled, it's a little bit more fair to them to have munchy options where they don't have to get out, and they can have the delivery. So, there are some advantages, I think, to the public. So, I think, given that we've already passed the ordinance, I don't, I think these, these operators have, have demonstrated that they're serious about trying to control the underage issue, and I think our law enforcement is, is on top of it, or at least aware of the, what, what additional requirements there'd have to be, so I'm going to support this.
Mr. Emmett.
So, one of the things that I think, for me, as I think about the safety concerns that are being raised, I think, is there something that we use in liquor stores nowadays to check IDs to see if they're phony or not? Is that...
To my knowledge, there's no state-mandated requirement with regard to what type of technology platform a, a retail store is required to use, but I can tell you that there are a variety of platforms available, from POS systems that have, you know, integrated software scanning that will, you know, link purchases to the actual buyer, to, as I mentioned previously, aftermarket handheld devices that will also read the encoded information on state-issued IDs. So, there are a, a variety of, of technology solutions out there. There is, in my experience...
But specific, my concern is, is just trying to understand even the concern that was raised earlier. I mean, we know we live in a college town, and lots of underage drinking that goes on outside of unofficial, just thought I'd throw that in. So, we, we see the interaction with bars and the liquor owners and stuff like that, or licensed, liquor license owners. What, what is the mechanism that will be implemented to address that concern? I, I've heard that, you know, we're going to make them pay upfront, and they have to show an ID, but if we know that we live in a college town, and we know fake IDs are all over the place, then there should be something being put forth by the company to say, this is what we're going to do to try to alleviate that concern, right?
Well, every driver that works with, with Go Brands, they do receive state-manded training, the BACIT training. They also have in-house training that will, that is designed to address exactly these issues. I, I can tell you that in the 24 markets that my client is doing business over the last two-plus years, they have been inspected and investigated multiple times, all of the, you know, the secret shopper, or the underage sting type of operation, they've not been found to be in violation in one location, anywhere around the country. This type of control is something they take very, very seriously. So, the, the combination of the information that, that the consumer is required to provide to the company before they're even able to conduct any, any sort of transaction, quite frankly, is above and beyond what you or I would have to go through if we went to the local packaged goods store and, and, you know, bought our six-pack of Bud Light. That, plus the fact that they have to match up their IDs with the information that they've provided to the company, that plus the, the training that the, each and every driver receives to identify signs of intoxication, to identify what could be potentially a, a fake ID, those types of situations, I, I think the combination of, of that is, is a fairly effective package.
All right, thank you.
Do we have a recommendation for this? Or a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor, actually.
Oh, okay. Where are we at then? We're going to vote?
Motion on the table, whatever, yeah. A motion before us.
I forgot, it's been a while.
So, we can vote, I guess.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, aye.
For the record, Mr. Roberts is opposed. Okay, so it passes. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
On to our next ordinance, Number 2017-11, or, -11-067, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2017-2018, Budget Amendment Number 4, Public Works Covered Material Ben's.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. This budget ordinance is a request to real, reallocate some funding to cover an unexpected cost in the construction of our salt shed at the Public Works facility. What, what we ran across was when this project was initially conceived, we were expecting that we were going to be able to build this with eight-inch concrete walls, and at that time, we received some bid quotes on what those walls would cost. After working with an engineer and building codes, it was determined that we needed to go to 12-inch walls, and I received some bid quotes for those that were considerably lower than what we'd actually received in an invitation to bid. So, we've got some expected, unexpected increase in cost.
Okay. Mr. Miller, go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve ordinance, or that we move ordinance Number 2017-11-067, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for FY 2018 for this budget amendment forward to council, full council for recommendation for approval.
I second.
Okay, moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any further discussion?
While I have your attention, can I bring up one little thing?
Sure.
In your packet this evening is the 2017-18 Snow Manual. If y'all have a few minutes to review it, if you have any questions, please send me an email, and I would like to extend an invitation to any of you that at any time you look out your window and it's snowing and you want to ride in a snowplow in your neighborhood or around the city, please give me a call. At any time you can email me 24/7 during a snowstorm, I will answer, I'll give you my cell number, I'll give you the phone number of the person that's running the shift, and go for a ride. It's a lot of fun.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it carries, no one's opposed. Resolution Number 2017-11-073R, Resolution Amending the City of Urbana Home Field Energy Electric Aggregation Program Agreement dated February 29, 2016, Public Works.
Good evening. We have an opportunity to save our residents some, a few dollars on their electric bill by extending the current agreement with Home Field an extra 18 months. The memo, I think, goes into a lot of detail, Scott, I think outlines it pretty well. We are under a little bit of a deadline, the end of this month, to let them know we want to take advantage of this extension offer, and it's staff recommendation that the attached ordinance, excuse me, resolution be approved.
Okay, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, this is great. It lowers the rate for the customer, it does extend the agreement for a little longer, which probably is still a, a plus for the customer. So, I'll move Resolution 2017-11-073R, amending the City of Urbana and Home Field Energy Electric Aggregation Program Agreement dated on February 29, 2016, to city council with the recommendation of approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a question or comment about who might, I mean, I know the rate to compare is a lot closer now to our rate, our city rate, so it's, it's not as good of a deal as it used to be at some points in time. And I was looking that they actually have two rates to compare, one is for eight months out of the year where they, you get charged a lower rate if you use more than 800 kilowatt-hours, so if you have electric heat, basically, the rate goes down to something like 4.5 cents. So, it seems to me that people who have electric heat and often use more than 800 kilowatt-hours per month might not benefit from this. Does that, do you, have, have you looked at that, or shall I wait and ask Scott next week?
I could ask Scott to respond if you'd like.
Okay, if, if that's the case, if it turns out that for most people with electric, more electric in their house, it's not a good deal, I think when we extend it as part of our announcement, we should point out that, you know, if that's the case, that, that it might not be the best deal for them.
And they can opt out.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody's opposed, okay, carries. I'm sorry, what?
I second.
I did.
Jared?
And the final resolution, Number 2017-11-074R, Resolution in Support of Illinois Bicentennial Celebration, City Clerk.
This one's pretty straightforward, I think the Illinois Municipal League is asking for cities and townships around the state to support efforts that they're involved in, in, in the state's bicentennial, which is coming up in the next year. I shared with you the memo from, from the IML Executive Director.
Any questions or discussion on that? We have a recommendation.
I'm going to make a motion that we move Resolution Number 2017-11-074R, this resolution in support of the...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What's that?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Oh, that's right. I completely forgot that Mary Alice added a discussion item. I completely forgot.
Did you want to say something?
No, go ahead. I forgot too.
Okay, I realize, I assume that I have the, you're giving me permission to talk.
My favorite person right now.
You've got six minutes.
Okay, I will talk really fast. I'm not sure if everybody is aware of all of the tax proposals that are in the Senate and currently in the House with the, they are trying to pass this by, before fall break. All right, so, A, time is of the essence. B, I feel personally that this is an attack on higher education for three reasons. The first reason is, is that they are removing the student loan deduction. The second reason is they are removing the lifelong learning credit. And the third reason is they are proposing to tax tuition waivers. So for those of you who are not familiar with tuition waivers, tuition waivers are given to teaching assistants and to graduate research assistants at the University of Illinois and at other institutions. They basically make it so that you do not have to pay tuition and the general fee. You still have to pay other fees such as student health insurance and so forth. This costs anywhere between $12,000 and $34,000 a year. Currently, I think the average take-home pay of a graduate student is roughly $20,000 a year. If they add on the additional $12,000 to $34,000 a year, I calculated that it would be an increase in tax liability for graduate students to be 200 to 400% of what they are currently paying. So what I am asking council is, are there people who are willing to write a letter to our national representatives talking about the impact on our community as we are heavily a university community? We rely on the University of Illinois. We rely on the expertise of people that we are able to recruit, not only for the purposes of research, but also for the economic driver within our community and within our state. And so I would like to drive that home to our federal representatives.
Mr. Jacobson.
So let, let me amplify on that a little bit. Essentially, 100% of all of the research scientists in the United States get their graduate training by having stipends that they can barely live on, plus tuition waivers. So having those, having the tuition taxable at, actually at private universities, this goes all the way up to $60,000 a year. Put them in tax brackets that they can't possibly afford. What this is going to do is cut off all of American science at the knees, right where the people are trained. I say this advisedly. This is the, in terms of the harmful impact on the nation, this is the stupidest idea that ever got this far in Congress. And I'm comparing it to all the other really stupid ones that I can think of. There are others that are equally stupid, but none that are this broadly potentially harmful. So in addition to the impact on our local community, I think that this national impact must be considered and must be addressed to our representatives. Now, Representative Davis did send the chairman of the House Finance Committee that reported this out to the House, a letter saying that he didn't like this particular clause, but he also said, well, you can't get everything you want, so if, there are a lot of other things in the tax bill that he thinks are okay, so he's probably inclined to vote for it, the bill including this in the, you know, when it gets to the floor of the House, that's not acceptable. He should, I, I will write to him and I'll post on my Facebook page that it's, that this is crazy and, and he should not vote for, and nobody in Congress should vote for any tax bill that includes this clause.
I think you should put a mark on the wall because the Republican, lone Republican here agrees with you 100%. Do we have anything further before we adjourn? Mayor Marlin.
Since I have two minutes, I would encourage anyone, if you haven't ridden on a snowplow, to take John up in his offer and maybe it'll snow this year. But more importantly, on page five of this very, very thorough operational plan, you'll see the sequence for plowing and salting. And I can guarantee you, if there's a snowfall of significant amount this year, you're going to get calls and emails asking why people's streets weren't plowed at a particular time. And you can turn to this, page five, and you can explain that each year, the, there are, you know, reasons that certain areas of town get plowed first, top priority, but when it comes to residential streets, they're rotated through each year, so now one neighborhood is plowed first or last. So we try to be fair about the sequence of plowing. But page five on this is a, keep it handy when the snow flies. You'll, you'll need it.
Mr. Jacobson.
Diane, is this available online also?
It will be.
It will be? Okay, great.
Yes.
Ms. Wu.
No, no, I just was saying there's one minute left because we extended it to 11.
Before that happens, meeting adjourned.